Okay, we'll call this regular session to order. We had a closed session. City Attorney, any report on that?
There's nothing to report.
That's a short report. That's probably, I hope the whole meeting goes that well. It's all right. Okay, City Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, will you please stay standing. Pledge of Allegiance will be done tonight by Mr. Nichols.
The Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll give the invocation. Dear God, look after the Newport Beach City Council tonight. Make us all honest and fair, respectable of each other. Give us the council members prudence to make good decisions that benefit all our residents. Amen. City Clerk?
Presentations, we have the Orange County Human Relations Commission Award for outstanding contributions in the area of community-oriented policing to the police department, teen academy. This is presented by Pat Crone, the OCHR Commissioner.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Pat Crone, a resident of Newport Beach and Commissioner with the Orange County Human Relations Commission. But it's my great pleasure to be here this evening to present a community policing award to our police department. The Human Relations Commission began recognizing exemplary community policing 10 years ago. The purpose of this award is to encourage departments to build meaningful police-community partnerships. And the ultimate goal, of course, is to have a county where all residents feel valued and included and safe. Well, we honor the Newport Beach Police Department's Teen Academy. The department started the Teen Academy in 2002, and I understand it was modeled after the very successful Citizens Academy, civic, Citizens Academy. During the eight-week program, students participate in a variety of interactive learning experiences, like simulated traffic stop and ride-alongs. During the process, teens have the opportunity to discuss and maybe even argue with officers about points of law or what's right and wrong. They also come to see that police officers are people in uniforms that have a vital role in our society. The feedback on the Teen Academy is very positive, indicating that as these young people develop into responsible adults, they'll have a really positive image of the police. The Newport Beach Police Department was recognized in our awards presentation in May, but it's my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize them here. The principals who were involved in the Teen Academy were Lieutenant Steve Shulman and Crime Prevention Officer Kathy Lowe. Kathy Lowe wasn't able to join us this evening. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Steve Shulman to join me here. Mr. Mayor, did you want to come down?
Sure.
I appreciate that. On behalf of the Orange County Human Relations, it's my pleasure to present the Newport Beach Police Department with a community-oriented police award. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Orange County Human Relations Commission for the award, the community-oriented policing award. Our teen academy has been going on now for about four years. We have done the adult academy, but we figured that it was very important to bridge the gap between the police and teenagers during that high school year, the period of time where they decide they either like the police or they don't, or they don't understand what we do. So, we took it upon ourselves to put together a class and bring kids from high school into our class, and we hold this class, for those of you who are listening and are not here today, every summer, I'll give a cheap plug, for about eight weeks. It begins after school lets out, and we encourage anyone who is in their high school years and attending Newport Beach High Schools to attend or apply to attend. And we usually have 25 to 30 kids per session, and it's become very successful. In fact, our next graduating class is next Thursday night. So, we appreciate the Orange County Human Relations Commission recognizing the city of Newport Beach and the police department for the work that we've done, and we're very proud of the kids that have gone through our classes. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Steve, thank you for those comments. For everybody here, as you know, and I want to thank Bill Hartford and Kathy Lowe, who are obviously on this fourth class. My son and three of his friends signed up. They're all going into sophomore, and it gives me a new appreciation. I speak every year, I try to, at the graduation ceremony. I have a whole new appreciation for what these kids are learning and feeling, and I just want to say, job well done. They really, 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 they hang out at our house, they appreciate it, they have a whole new respect and look at the Newport Beach Police and what you guys do. So, my comments next week will reflect that.
Great, well, thanks very much. We look forward to having you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if also I may add, as a graduate myself of the last adult citizen police academy, there is a new class starting on September 22 at 7:00 PM. I think they're every, well, it's every week for 12 weeks?
Every week for 12 weeks from 7:00 to 10:00 PM.
And you would sign up at the police department for that?
That's correct, or you can go to nbd.org on the web and download an application and send it in to Kathy Lowe.
I would highly recommend that, even as a city councilman, I think I found out a few new things about our police department, and it was informational as well as fun.
We encourage everyone to go. Council people and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you, Pat, as well. Thanks for doing this.
Proclamation for Russian National Orchestra Day.
Who's going to receive this? Good. Malcolm, great. I'm going to read this before I present it. Whereas the city of Newport Beach has hosted, not will host, has hosted the Russian Orchestra Wind Quartet at a free outdoor concert at Grant Howard Park, and that occurred on August 2nd, as I understand.
Right.
Whereas the Russian National Orchestra Wind Quartet local appearance is part of Newport Beach Concert in the Park Series. That orchestra is privately funded, independent from the government. It receives critical financial organizational support from the Russian Arts Foundation, and this Russian National Orchestra has received international accolades such as taking top honors at the Osaka International Chamber of Music Competition, one of the most prestigious competitions in the chamber music world, as well as receiving a 2004 Grammy for the recording of Peter and the Wolf and Wolf Tracks, the first ever awarded to a Russian orchestra. The goal of this music event is to raise funds to support children's programs in Russia and throughout the country the orchestra visits. Malcolm Hill and Mallory Hill are hereby recognized for bringing this world-class music event for the first time to the city of Newport Beach. Therefore, the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the, I on behalf of the entire city council, hereby proclaim August 9th as Russian National Orchestra Day, and in the city of Newport Beach encourage all citizens here to join me in recognizing the Russian National Orchestra for their support in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that I took my three-year-old granddaughter to the Peter and the Wolf, and she listened to the entire presentation. She's usually a wiggleworm, but we said, I kind of whispered over her shoulder what was going on, and she just had a wonderful time, and they, I've just never seen her enjoy music quite like that.
Well, it's, especially Peter and the Wolf, it's an engaging piece for the kids, and I think Sergey Markov, the CEO of the Russian National Orchestra, who narrated Wolf Tracks at the concert.
He did an excellent job.
He did a really good job of easing any kind of fears going in of the Wolf story to the kids. So, it was really a magical night, and I appreciate the city council and the city of Newport Beach for allowing the Russian National Orchestra Wind Quartet to come to the city, and we're hopeful that next year, the entire orchestra, 100-plus members, will be in Newport Beach to perform for the citizens. Thank you very much.
Councilman Daigle, do you want to add anything?
Just that your organization did a fabulous job with the program. Thank you.
Proclamation for Tall Ship Argus 100th Birthday.
This will be presented by Mayor Protem Don Webb.
Can we have the representatives of the sea base come forward and stand by the microphone? As well as our guests from Denmark? We have representatives from both the sea base organization as well as two individuals from Marstal, two individual scouts from Marstal, Denmark, and the significance of that is that the ship Argus was constructed 100 years ago in Marstal, Denmark. So, let me read the proclamation that tells you a little bit more about the ship Argus and this event. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America Sea Base Program in Newport Beach provides a sailing adventure for teenagers who want to develop as sailors and skippers through learning advanced skills in small and large boat sailing, celestial and electronic navigation, first aid, knot tying, and racing. And whereas since 1972, large boat sail training has been provided at the sea's base aboard the 92-foot Top Sails Catch Argus. Whereas the Argus was built in 1905 in the town of Marstal on the Isle of Arrow in southern Denmark, and in its early years hauled lumber, grain, and cement around the Baltic Sea. And whereas the Sea Base High Adventure Program was the, what uses the Argus for two- and five-day training trips to Catalina and other nearby ports, giving over 800 youths a year the experience of sailing the old-fashioned way. And whereas on April 25, 2004, the crew of the Argus, while returning from Catalina Island, rescued an abandoned skin diver who was seen floating in the ocean by an observant sea scout. And whereas the Argus annually participates in the Newport Harbor Christmas Boat Parade of Lights, the Fourth of July Character Boat Parade, and this year will also be taking part in the Let's Do Lunch program at the Dunes. Whereas the Argus will be a Newport Beach participant in the 2005 Tall Ships LA, August 12 through the 14th, that's this coming weekend, and in San Diego Festival of Sail 2005, August 17th and 21st, 2005, if you go down to San Diego, next weekend, you'll be able to get onboard the Argus and see some other tall ships. Whereas a scout and his leader have journeyed from Marstal, Denmark, the Argus port of origin, to Newport Beach to join the Sea Base Celebration of the Argus 100th Year. Now, therefore, in recognition of the Argus having sailed the oceans for 100 years and for the last 33 years, providing the youth of this community and county an opportunity to learn seamanship on a tall ship, I, John Heffernan, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim 2005 as the Tall Ship Argus 100th Year, and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing the sailing heritage this ship brings to Newport Harbor. And then he has signed it. The proclamation, let me present it to you.
Who's going to receive this? Okay. Well, she received this for the crew. Congratulations. The Argus is really a great asset to Newport Beach and our harbor and our sea scouts, and we appreciate you all you gentlemen. Will somebody like to, I'd like to say something, Ralph, but.
I would like to express our thanks to the city of Newport Beach, who decided in their good graces to give the sea scout base in March of 1937 on a one-year, dollar-a-year lease, and it has been there ever since. And there's been a change of ownership with the county, and that's the thing, but it's because of the good graces of the city. And I'd also like to present Johan Jensen, and he has something for the city.
Yeah, it's an honor to be here, and I got a present for the city.
Thank you very much.
And I think, I think that's it.
Open it up. Should we open it up? Open it up? Sure, let's see it.
This is a, it's a book on Arrow, which is the island in Denmark, where the ship came from. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you again. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card for those wishing to address the council. The card is used to assist in the preparation of the minutes, and the completion of it is optional. Completed card should be placed in the box at the podium. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with you, Councilman Nichols.
I'm going to pass tonight. Thank you.
You? Councilman Daigle?
Yes, we'd like to announce the First Annual Orange County Conference for Women, in which the city of Newport Beach and Hoag Hospital are sponsors. Singular Wireless is our luncheon sponsor. And one of the panel discussions is going to be on spa and fitness, and we're featuring local women in our community. We have Susan Tobiasen, who founded Body Design in 1986, and they're located in Newport Center, and their goal is to help women achieve their health and fitness goals in a nurturing and supportive environment. We also have Pam Mooney of Shape Up Fitness. She teaches her clients about nutrition and the proper way to exercise, and Shape Up Fitness is located in Corona Del Mar. And one of the industries that's really booming in America now is spas. You know, we're finding them located in hotels and resorts and medical environments. And Angela Courtwright of Spa Gregory's is savvy about the kinds of services women are seeking and how to provide effective retailing. So, she'll also be a speaker. And we also have a website, I forgot. And one of the real successes of these businesses is their ability to accommodate the needs of the women in terms of their facility layouts and their new amenities. And it's really smart business because according to the International Health Racket and Sports Club Association, women comprise 52% of the more than 36 million health club members in the United States. So, those are our speakers for that panel. We also have a panel on women in cuisine, women in career, women in community, also Make a Difference, which touches on volunteerism, nonprofits, and ways to get involved in our community. And our city attorney, Robin Clausen, is moderating the women in career panel. And that panel includes Christine Iger, Isabel Villas Senora, Debbie Allen, and also Martha Ventura. Thank you.
Councilman, when and where is it?
Thank you for those important details. It's September 14th, right here at the wonderful Bellboa Bay Club, and our councilmen will be among the VIPs, and I know that some of the women have specifically requested to be able to sit at the same table as some of them, so that's very nice.
They obviously don't know us. I've been Ridgway. What can I say? Thank you. I'd just like to make an announcement for the Orange County Marathon Training Program launch. It actually, we had, there was a ceremonial launch last Saturday at Corona Del Mar High, but the official Get Fit Training Program begins this week, and people can visit the site if they want to get into the marathon, which will be held on January 8th, by the way, 2006. And it'll be the Second Annual Orange County Marathon, but if you go to orangecounty, or ocmarathon.com, or call 949-476-7076. And Cal Coast Running, Bill Sumner, will be meeting on Saturday mornings at Corona Del Mar at 7:00 AM, and they're going to do long runs and training together. So, anybody who wants to get extremely fit, I would certainly recommend you get into the marathon training program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Webb?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Selich?
Nothing.
Okay, I have some. This is unusual time, this next six weeks, because we have a lot of meetings. City council's going to be meeting, so I'd like to go over that schedule tonight. And the upcoming meeting, two days from tonight, starting at 6, not 7, 6, as if anybody needs to know, St. Andrews, and we're going to be dealing with that issue, hopefully all the testimony and hearing it, and hopefully making a decision, which is, I think, a common objective here, that night. Next, we have a meeting the following Tuesday, on the 16th, dealing with our general plan update, which is a big 20-year objective of ours, trying to conclude that. We have regular city council meeting on Tuesday, the 23rd. We'll be dealing with city hall again. We're dealing with city hall tonight as a regular gen item, public hearing. We'll deal with it again on the 23rd with our regular business. Then on the 30th, Tuesday, we'll be dealing with the general plan again. So, Tuesday, 7 o'clock, regular meeting, but we'll just be dealing with the general plan. And then on the 13th of September, we'll be dealing with the city hall financial plan. Again, a regular public hearing, starting at 7 o'clock. That's where we'll be dealing with that. I want to go back to the 11th, which is this Thursday. I want to go back to what we, the general agenda for the meeting, what's going to happen that night, so people have an expectation. What we'll be dealing with, the certification of the environmental impact report, and dealing with the land use decisions. And we'll be taking testimony on those items, and then the council altogether will be making a decision on each of those. Certification of the EIR and approval or modification or disapproval of the land use issues that are before us. And part of that will be the presentation of the overall plan, and that will be that the proponent will have 20 minutes, the church, the opponents will have 20 minutes, then we will have public testimony, and we will have you fill out a yellow card here, and we'll take you, and I will read, the city clerk will read them off, and we'll have you tear up here early, so we don't have to go through all of the moving of people out of the chairs here in the audience, and so we can do this expeditiously. Public comment, as I understand, will be limited for two minutes per public speaker, and then we'll go through those. We're going to have an orderly meeting. You know, this isn't a bullfight, and it's not an angel game, and we're going to keep it orderly and hopefully keep everybody's attention and also respect for each other. Then we're going to come back. We'll cut off the public testimony. We'll have the opponents have five minutes to conclude, then we'll have the proponent, the church, have the final five minutes. That's what I understand the sequence will be. Then we'll close off the public testimony. We will deal with the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report first, then we'll deal with the land use decisions after that. So, that's the sequence for this coming Thursday, starting at 6, and we expect a more than full house, given all the attention this issue has. So, that's, if anybody has anything to add on that, on the council side, you can use this time to do it. Okay? Then that's the end of this segment. City Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 10, and supplemental item 15, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, we'll start with the city council first. We'll start Mr. Selich.
I have nothing.
Mr. Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Nothing.
Mr. Ridgway?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Daigle?
None, thanks.
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to have four, the city's position on that explained and vote on it.
All right. Item four is Ridge Park Drive, Ridge Park Road, rather, construction truck traffic. I'll come back to myself. I have none. Okay, I'm going to then open this up to the public. Seeing no one, we'll close the public portion. Do I have a motion here?
I move to approve the consent calendar items, which are items 1 through 10 and 15, except for item four, which has been full.
Second.
Okay, any more comment here? Okay, let's vote. City Clerk?
Item number 11 is the master fee schedule.
City Manager, who's going to give the report on this?
I think Administrative Services Director Dennis Daner is in the back, and hopefully is beginning to walk forward.
Mr. Daner? Good.
Thank you, City Manager, Blue Dell. Good evening, Mayor Heffernan and members of the city council. The issue before the city council this evening is whether to amend the master fee schedule to reflect the change in the cost of providing city services. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing and then adopting the resolution updating the master fee schedule. And I'd like to just spend probably two minutes giving you master fee schedule. And I'd like to just spend probably two minutes giving you a little background on this subject. In 1996, the city retained the CPA firm of KPMG Pete Marwick to conduct a cost of services study for the city. The purpose of the study was to determine the actual cost of providing identified city services. Then, after extensive study by the council's finance committee and the full council, the council adopted Ordinance 97-8, which codified the council's decisions regarding the percentage of costs to be recovered from direct user fees, and the amount, if any, to be recovered from general fund revenues. Each year since then, after budget adoption, the council has acted to update the fee resolution for cost increases by a combination of increases in the Consumer Price Index, and any increases in direct labor costs. The action before you this evening recommends an increase in the fee schedule of 4.2 percent, which represents the CPI increase since the schedule was last updated last year. No increase in labor costs has been computed in the updates since labor negotiations with the city employee associations are still, have not concluded. The only recommended change to the fee schedule received with your packets last week reflected change discussed by the city finance committee yesterday, which sets the traffic study fees charged by the planning department and the public works department at the same amount of $125 per hour. This change can be found on page 21 of your fee schedule. With that, we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I have, is it 4.02 or 4.2? Your staff report says 4.02, on a CPI increase?
It's 4.02. I'm sorry, it's 4.02.
No, that's fine. Secondly, just to give our audience an idea of how many prices are we changing? I mean, how many fees do we, are we dealing with here?
I believe we're dealing with over 700 city fees at this point.
That's good. All right. Any questions from the rest of the council? Okay. All right, I'm going to open this up for the public. Anybody want to speak on this? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Okay. Do I have a motion here?
Move the action.
Okay, any other comment? All right, let's vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
City clerk, do we have public comments on non-agenda items, or is this, am I out of order here? Item K. No, no, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just following.
It's public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Mr. Hildreth, come on up.
Thank you very much. Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. Presented some letters to the city council. Haven't heard a response, but according to the city guidelines, they really don't have to. Therefore, my comments will be, my letters will be directed to the city powers at B. And just to reflect upon what has been said, the, back when Don Webb was the director of public works, he was in charge of that, and said that he's going to put up public access down at the southwest end of the Grand Canal. And apparently, by his direction, what the city decided to put up was a ladder. So that means that the city is willing to have access at that location. And under the documentation that I have presented to the city council, is that a former city employee actually lied on the 26th of July, 1999, a person by the name of Tony Mailam, saying that...
Let's not throw out some accusations. I mean, you're in a public forum. You're saying somebody's a liar. You better be careful, Mr. Hildreth.
I presented those documents to the city council.
No, but that's your conclusion. That's, and you're making more of a statement now. That's your opinion. It's your opinion. You better be careful what you say.
Documents prove?
They prove, they prove something to you possibly, but to no one else. So continue on.
Very well. Access to the Grand Canal, through documentation that I have presented to the city, city council as well, that access to the Grand Canal is through a structure called Platform and Steps, that people use to access moorings in the Grand Canal. And the moorings in the Grand Canal, as the city knows, are in the Grand Canal, and have already been reviewed in 1988. Therefore, the city does not, per se, charge for the moorings in the Grand Canal, however, does charge for the accessing to those moorings. Under common sense, once property rights have been established, access to those rights cannot be denied. This is if I were to come up to the city hall and say, "Yeah, you have a city hall, but you can't use it anymore," because I'm going to deny you access to the darn thing. I have asked how I'm going to get down to this darn thing, how I'm going to access this mooring, and I have yet to have a response. So I will go and send letters to the powers that be of the city, and I hope that I will have a response. So I will come back to the city council and voice my opposition to this, because I don't like being classified as falling on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public hearing. City clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
Okay, we'll take them in the order. Mr. Selich, general plan?
We haven't had a meeting of the General Plan Update Committee, but I'd just make everyone aware that the General Plan Advisory Committee recommendations on the general plan are on the city's website, and can be downloaded and reviewed. And just let the rest of the council know that I went through the recommendations. It took me about three hours to go through them, so be prepared.
And is this what we're going to review?
This is what we're reviewing on the 16th and the 30th, yes.
Okay. So if you're a resident, and you want to have input on the general plan, the first bite of it will be on the 16th, and then on the 30th, in these chambers, starting at 7:00. Anything else, Mr. Selich? Okay. Mr. Ridgway, local coastal plan?
Thank you. Actually, I wrote a letter to the Coastal Commission demanding a hearing that would be held in Eureka, yeah, next month. And I, and we demanded that as a right, which we felt we had. Have we received a response? And I need Patty or Sharon to help me on that.
We have not received a written response as of yet. We have received through the consultant that we have now retained to help us deal with the staff in the Coastal Commission, kind of a verbal word that they disagree with our position related to the legal necessity for a hearing in September in Eureka. We have also set up a meeting with the staff. It's actually going to occur Thursday afternoon. We're going to their offices in Long Beach. It will include Deborah Lee, who is the senior deputy director of the southern, of the southern part of the state. So a person that does have some ability to make choices and decisions that would then be included in their staff's recommendation. So I'm sure that we are going to, once again, request some written response, because we feel it's warranted. And we also did send that communication to all of the commissioners, as well as all of the San Francisco senior staff.
Okay. And then, for me to finish up the report, the fact that we have a meeting with the Coastal Commission staff here in Long Beach on Thursday is progress. May not seem like it, but that is definitely progress. I want to let everybody know that, and...
It took us about two and a half weeks to schedule it.
I understand. Anyhow, that's the report.
Okay. Well, maybe we can give the background of what this meeting's about. As I understand, we've submitted something to the Coastal Commission. They've taken a long time to review it. Yet, on the other hand, we are, they are imposing upon us a deadline to have a local coastal plan certified, right? Maybe you can explain to what all that meant.
The California Coastal Act sets out the requirements for the planning commission's consideration of local coastal plans. When a application is deemed complete, and we submitted our application in July of 2004, and it was deemed complete within, I think, about four to six weeks after that, they are required by their statute to schedule a hearing within 60 days, and to actually take an action within 90 days. However, the statute also gives the commission the ability to extend those timeframes for a period of one year. And they did request that of their, the staff did request that of their commission. The city actually sent a letter of support, kind of with the caveat that we were expecting them to deal with it expeditiously, and that we would like to hopefully start having hearings in March of '05. They have not made that at all. It took us nearly until July to even get their first round of comments on our draft land use plan. And so we have been working, we have been really diligent in trying to turn around our side of the comments and the work, because we're anxious, and we are being fined on a monthly basis.
Because that's the other side of the coin, is that we are being compelled, and we've agreed, to have this local coastal plan, our own. And it's imposed upon us, and we're trying to be diligent, and it's been a year delay at the Coastal Commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think it's fair to our residents to know that. We're just not, we're trying to do our job, but we're being prevented by the agency that has to approve the very thing we've submitted. All right, thank you. Okay, Newport Coast Advisor Committee, there's no report on, for me, on that. Mr. Webb on the Mariners' library?
There's not been any changes, other than the advance in construction. Each week, the library comes closer and closer towards completion. And I had an opportunity to tour it, this, just this last week, and it's going to be an impressive library.
Thank you. All right, we'll just follow up. Mr. Webb, can you give us an update on the Centennial?
Centennial programs are moving forward. All of our various different committees are very active. We have in excess of 200 volunteers working on various different portions of the event. The, the one that is, is going to be, I guess, the most spectacular first event is called Let's Do Launch. It's October 2nd. It will be held at the Dunes. Tickets went on sale last week, and we have had a tremendous response. There's over 3,000 people have purchased tickets so far. They're going fast, so if you don't have yours yet, and you want to come and see, I have a wonderful family day. There will be foods, lots of events for all ages to participate in. There will be several bands playing during the day, and it will be finished up by the Beach Boys from 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon to 5:00. We will, you can purchase tickets online at www.nuportbeach.com, or at our Recreation and Senior Services Department here at City Hall. And we're still looking for sponsors. I think we've raised close to $300,000 so far. And we still have a little bit to go to handle the rest of the events that we're going to have after Let's Do Launch. So I really hope that everybody takes the opportunity to participate in Let's Do Launch, as well as some of the other activities, such as the Rose Float, and other events that we will have after that.
Thank you. My brother-in-law was clever enough to remind me that a better name for the band would be the Newport Beach Boys. Very cute. Okay, let's move on with that. Mr. Ridgway, Marina Park?
Actually, I'm going to, Mr. Webb is the chairman of that, but I think we're just down to one last meeting. Mr. Webb?
We will have a meeting in September, in which our subcommittee will give us information related to goals and needs, and hopefully we can wrap it up at that particular meeting and bring something forward to the council. But that meeting will be in September, the, I think it's the third Thursday, or no?
Does anybody know?
I can't remember now. Any rate, we'll announce that at the September meeting.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes, on Robin Clausen, and Steve Rozansky, myself, and Mr. Webb?
Who, sir?
I know, I'm just, I'm pulling the blank. Anyhow, we met with the staff to the State Lands Commission here at City Hall. It was actually Curtis Fossum, who is the attorney for the State Lands Commission, and then, I think, four, three staff members. We discussed a couple of, the boundary of the Marina Park area, and the, where the, the high-water mark is, or the, I believe, is the high-water mark, correct? Anyhow, nothing was decided. I will say that the State Lands Commission staff came very prepared with evidence and information, supporting their position that much of Marina Park is in a tidelands. And they had documents from 1875. They had actually a, what was in a survey, probably done, I don't know that, I think it was 1875 and...
Well, they had the Finley Meander Line, and they had a Corps of Engineers survey, which I think was around the turn of the century, though.
Right, yeah. But there were two documents. Anyhow, they made their case. We didn't get into a, an advocacy or a defense. We just discussed generally their position. We certainly stated our position, and let them know that we're proceeding forward with a new land use plan. Let me make, the only comment that was mutually understood by both sides was, if, depending on what is adopted as a new land use plan, all issues may become moot. Would that be a fair statement?
If the land use plan is consistent with the tidelands trust, yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney, is the gist of this, is that, that what is known as Marina Park is part uplands, part tidelands? Is this what we're trying to determine?
Yes.
And why does it make a difference? Maybe you can tell everyone what...
Well, if it's, the, the portion of the property that is considered, or that is determined to be designated tidelands, is limited to tidelands trust uses. If it's uplands, then it doesn't have those limitations on it. The city would be able to maybe put uses that would be other than approved, for instance, navigation, fisheries, open space, recreation, those are all tidelands consistent uses pursuant to the trust that the city's been granted that property, or the tidelands property.
Which is, which is a lot of what the beach...
Residential, some commercial, non-supportive commercial would not be.
Good.
One last comment. Under our charter, we have to maintain 75 feet above mean-high tide?
85.
85? 85? Of mean-high tide. Anyhow, based upon our discussions, the documents that they had, and the documents that we have, we, we all, at least without verification, agree that that line is probably the sidewalk or the small bulkhead that's in front of the mobile home park.
Good. Agree on something. Good. Okay, any other council committee reports? Okay. City clerk?
Item number 12 is the Planning Commission Agenda for August 4th.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Planning Commission met last Thursday, as they usually do. There were five, or there were four action items on their agenda. One was an extension of an already-approved traffic study for a property of 1401 Dove Street, and that was approved by the Planning Commission without comment. They did hear for the second time consideration of a condominium conversion permit for an eight-unit apartment project on Domingo Drive. Some of the concerns were the amount of parking, and how parking might be controlled in existing motor courts. So the commission did add an additional condition in that regard. Prior testimony had questioned the city's noticing for that project, and so it was continued for the purpose of ensuring that notices to the residents had, in fact, been completed. But the commission did take action, and that is subject to appeal. The third item was an appeal by one of the planning commissioners of a modification permit... permit approved conditionally by the zoning administrator. There were some comparables to a prior modification that had been appealed by the applicant, and the Planning Commission did review this for the purpose of ensuring consistent action. In reviewing it, they did get into a large discussion as to the minimum width that really is required to support a required onsite parking. And the applicant proposed a special type of construction for a wall separation for the garage, that instead of being six inches, would be two inches, and that would give two additional inches in both garages. And so, the commission did sustain the zoning administrator's action with that added change. Also considered was the council's direction to reconsider the parking standards for duplexes. This ended up being a twofold consideration, because the last time the city council discussed this, there was some question about the reasons why some of our R-two areas have a different parking requirement than others. Some required one and a half spaces per unit, and the rest required two spaces per unit. So, one of the two items considered was changing that standard, and it affected about, I believe it was about ninety-five properties in the Newport Heights area. The second was to consider whether duplex condominium conversion should in fact be required to provide the current code requirement for parking of two parking spaces per unit. The Planning Commission did recommend that for approval. However, they did feel that before the council takes this item up, that they would like all the directly affected property owners notified by direct mail. So, that is going to take us a little bit of time to accomplish. We have to develop the lists and then create the communication. So, that won't be coming next time. It will be scheduled for one of your meetings in September. And that concludes my report.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Ms. Nichols?
This eight-unit condominium that was proposed, is that, it, that has been continued, so is that then challengeable the next time, Patty? Or is that...
No, it was approved at the last Planning Commission meeting. It was continued from the prior meeting.
Oh, I see. Now, this condominium, sent that over with only one parking spot per unit?
No, this particular apartment project has two parking spaces onsite per unit.
So, this is the, an exception in that sense?
Well, this one just isn't as old as the one the council considered previously. So, it had a higher parking requirement when it was constructed.
Okay, so then, this is in line with the dictum that higher than two units would have two parking spots per unit?
Yes, you may recollect, the last ordinance that the council approved was applied only to triplexes and larger. This obviously would fall under that criteria. The council also established a fairly lengthy grace period for continuing to proceed under the prior rules, and that, this one came through pursuant to that provision as well. The consideration regarding condominium parking for duplexes did occur at the Planning Commission at their last meeting on Thursday.
I understand that, but I didn't understand exactly what you said here. Now, this qua, this did not need that qualification, though, because it already had two units, two parking spots per unit. Or, or did I misunderstand what you said?
Well, this one actually would have made it because it would have been considered and approved prior to the effective date of the ordinance. Have the council established just a thirty-day effective period, but they did it much longer. The fact of the matter is, is that, right, if this were done today, under what you, what the council has just approved, it would require two and a half parking spaces per unit.
Two and a half?
Yes.
Now, why is that? Because of the size of the units?
No, it, it's in order to provide, to provide some level of guest parking.
I think it would be worthwhile hearing this and finding out. I'd, I'd like to ask the council their thought on that. This is certainly in line with that five-unit one we had over in Corona Del Mar, and I think we should make sure that these arguments are brought to our citizenry before we bring forth these large projects. Now, if this has the full parking, which it does have two, I can see that, but I, I still think maybe we ought to talk about it. I'd, I'd make a motion to bring it up.
Do we have a second for that?
I have a conflict of interest, so I'm just going to step back.
No second? No second? Okay, then that motion will die for lack of a second. But before we go off that topic, I assume, Patty, that during the discussion of this item with the Planning Commission, they did address that ratio issue and the parking spaces and...
Yes.
They did. And this was a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission? It says always, so it's a seven-all vote?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments for, questions for Patty? Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
Item number thirteen, Corona Del Mar State Beach Improvements Award of Contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking the city council if you would be willing to take item number fourteen, which is the City Hall project presentation. We have a number of consultants out in the audience, and would like to take that prior to the Corona Del Mar State Beach.
Okay, City Clerk, what does that require? Take something out of order?
Just the approval of the council.
Okay. Somebody want to, want to make a motion of that effect?
Some move.
Second? Somebody second it?
You did.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay?
Councilmember Rosansky and Webb voting no, the motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item placed before you tonight was assigned the title by me, "The City Council Review and Direction to Consultants on Current Planning Status of Proposed City Hall Structure and Grounds." This item appeared upon the, on the city council agenda approximately four months ago, and council directed among the three alternatives to choose an alternative for further work, and that alternative was scraping existing city hall and doing twenty percent schematics on a new fire station, parking garage, and also a city hall. So, a lot of work has taken place in those four months. The city council building committee has held regular meetings in order to oversee the planning and some of the decision-making that needs to take place in order to move towards twenty percent schematics. But I think this is a good time, before we get any further and too deep into the project, to bring the project to the city council and also to the public for your input. I limited the item tonight to the city council because I felt like there may be a desire to get very involved in some of the details of the planning that has taken place, and I also thought that it was a subject that deserved full attention. This item does not include the parking garage and the fire station. It is my intent at the meeting on the twenty-third, our next meeting, that the architect and consultants would come back and then talk about in detail the fire station and the parking lot, respond to any issues that were raised tonight regarding city hall, and then talk about the total project and what the total project cost would be. You will hear about cost for city hall tonight. This presentation tonight really is just another important step in a process that began about four years ago, when the city council authorized the space needs assessment for our city hall. And if you will recall, the space needs analysis came up with these major issues for city hall. The seismic safety of the building does not meet seismic code. It is not in ADA compliance. There is inadequate meeting space to deal with the public. The right adjacencies don't exist for the public's convenience. There is an adequate employee workspace, and there was also a concern, though, as to what the cost of a new city hall would be. This presentation tonight is to give you the opportunity to see how those and other issues are dealt with. Of course, there were some other issues that came out of the process, such as the seismic safety deficiencies at the fire station and the lack of sufficient parking for the public. Those issues will be dealt with in the next council meeting's presentation, along with the overall project cost. Then it's my intent in your first meeting in November, excuse me, September, September the thirteenth, to come back with a presentation from the city hall financing team, so that you can hear the planning and work that has taken place that would result in financing of a city hall, should you make that decision at a later date. It's staff's intent to come back to the city council, hopefully in October, with the twenty percent schematics and also the financing package, so that you could make the final decision on whether to move forward with this project or not. I think at this point, I will turn it over to Roger Torero of Griffin Structures, because there is going to be approximately a twenty, twenty-five minute presentation.
Okay. Let me, let me add a bit here. Our original thought was to bring the project, this, this, what we're hearing tonight is a first chapter in what is the ongoing contract. The city has five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars with Griffin Structures to analyze the needs for a new city hall, and then to, then to act on it. In other words, to lay out a conceptual initial designs and options for us to consider. This was originally going to, the target was to present this at the first meeting in October. We changed this. I think that the consensus was that the public should have more input, more exposure to this project since it's so large, and that's why we're breaking it down into three components, this meeting, meeting on the twenty-third, meeting on the thirteenth of September, to deal with it, to give you, give our residents a chance to see it, to digest it, to ponder it, come back and make comments, you know, to us and to Griffin Structures, to, so that the, on the target meeting in October, we have good public input, and, and we're able to digest those comments and to hopefully present a complete package for a consideration by the city council at that time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Heffernan, members of the council, members of the community at home, and members of the community in the council chambers this evening. I'm Roger Torero, Griffin Structures. As Mayor Heffernan had mentioned, this has been a long process. We are in our fourth year of working on this particular project, and this evening, if I were to thematically pick a couple of short phrases for the, the concept for tonight's meeting, I would say that it's opportunities, constraints, and options, both from a design standpoint and from a budgetary standpoint. We will present for you all of those things. We have broken this down as succinctly as possible, to give you as much information in the most concise manner, so that you then are informed and can make decisions based on information and fact, rather than theoretical judgment. I'm going to start the presentation very briefly. I know that we have a new councilman with us this evening, who has not had the opportunity to spend the last several years with us. I also note that there may be some people always joining us for the first time, perhaps even at home. So, we're going to be very quick and give you a very brief background on where we have been to where we are. And brief will be the, will be the, the word. Okay, this is what the presentation this evening will cover. We'll cover the background, in other words, where have we been to where we are. We'll cover the design process. It will cover planning options. It will cover aesthetic options and budgetary options, all related to the city hall. As Mr. Bloudow did mention, and I believe Mayor Heffernan confirmed, we will be coming back next council meeting on the twenty-third. We will present detailed designs and, concept designs and budgets for both the parking structure and the fire station, and then we will present to you an aggregate budget for the entire overall project, and some of that will be based upon the decisions, hopefully, that you will be able to render this evening. During this past several months, since our last full presentation to council, which was the tenth of May of this year, we've had a series of working sessions. We've had four town hall meetings, all of which were publicly noticed. Three were held here on Saturdays, and one was held here on a Monday night. For those who cannot attend the Saturday sessions, our average attendance was probably around eighty people for the four meetings, if weighted and averaged. We have received and solicited council input periodically from various members of the council. We do have a standing building committee. Building consists, committee is, consists of Mayor Heffernan, Councilman Webb, and Councilman Ridgeway. We meet every two weeks or every other week biweekly, and frankly, sometimes we meet every week. And these three gentlemen have been putting in an extraordinary amount of time with Mr. Bloudow and Mr. Batum and staff and our team in working through the issues on a detailed level, so that what you see here this evening is a presentation that encompasses the result of that effort, and it's really an amalgam of many points of view and many concerns and considerations. We are now to the August ninth conceptual review. I'm going to introduce Rick Demato. He's a principal and partner of LPA Architects and the principal designer for the project. Rick?
Good evening, Mayor and council. What I'm going to do is take you through, first, our design process, what led to the inspiration for both the function and the aesthetics of the city hall project. First, we have to take into consideration the opportunities and constraints of the site. This has changed a little bit since our last presentation, because some of the constraints have changed. There's a necessity to maintain the width and the single direction of Via Puerto. That does affect our site planning. There was a public interest to maintain the green space, mostly the landmark ficus trees that are currently in front of city hall. There's the existing configuration of the site. It's very oddly configured, and that does affect the way that the site plan is configured. There's a desire to eliminate the existing service easement road for the retail project, which is directly behind the civic center. There's a desire for the fire station to incorporate the OCFA standards. It currently doesn't. There's also a desire for the realignment of Thirty-second Street. So, the first thing that happened was the land swap with the retail center directly adjacent to the property. What that did for us, by exchanging one square foot for one square foot, it gave us a much more contiguous piece of land to work with, which made our planning much easier, much more efficient. It also enabled us to incorporate the OCFA standard fire station. Just by consolidating the site and making it more contiguous, we were able to eliminate the need for the retail service easement. We were able to incorporate the OCFA standard fire station, and also create that more contiguous site, which made a more efficient and useful site plan. Back in May, May tenth, this was the final site plan that we had looked at. Of course, many things have happened since then to reconfigure and change the site, so that it worked more efficiently for public and city use. If we take a closer look at it, and we start to talk about the development that has happened with our building committee meetings, one significant change was, since we were no longer maintaining the existing council chambers, we were able to rethink that and put it in a more efficient, more useful position on the site. So, there was a shift in the council chambers. There was a desire to increase the outdoor public spaces, the exterior public spaces. And the, the view that you're looking at right now is a rather restricted space, and we thought that can get more use for public events, so we decided to widen that space. A shift of the community room to make that more visible to the public. And a shift of the entry focus. It suddenly dawned on all of us in a meeting that all of your public was now going to be entering the project from the parking structure. So, there really was a need to have that main entry facing the parking structure itself. The other thing that came into play was the internal functions of the building. The, the shape and configuration of the building is really based on the internal need and the internal function of the building. The one thing that really started to present itself was the location of the one-stop shop. The one-stop shop wanted to have all the building departments directly focused around it. And when we started to have our initial meetings with staff, it came out that more people wanted to be downstairs than upstairs. So, that really started to shape the building, and we found the initial shape that we were dealing with really didn't accommodate that very well. So, we really tried to consolidate the departments around the one-stop shop, which really started to form the shape of the building. Again, the other things that took place were, were the shift of the council chambers, the shift of the community room, the expanded exterior space, and the refocus of the main entry to the city hall. You can see right here, just from a planning standpoint, that the, the original shape really wasn't working for us. We had to start to rethink that. Just real briefly, I'm going to go through how the parking structure and fire station do work, so you can see how they fit into the overall plan. The parking structure, as it lays out, has a main entry, which is, or main exit... The parking structure as it lays out has a main entry which is, or main exit, excuse me, which is directly across from the entrance to City Hall. We also incorporated two stairs at either corner, one which has direct access to the pedestrian, or excuse me, to the retail project directly behind. We have three lanes which can be reversed so that you have the choice of doing either two lanes in, one lane out, two lanes out, one lane in, depending on what type of function is happening at City Hall. We also looked at the possibility of creating a very, very simple parking structure, very cost effective, but yet utilizing a series of panels which could start to animate the edges of the parking structure specifically along the 32nd Street elevation. Most of the elevations will be covered by either City Hall, Fire Station, the retail project, but the exposed facade at 32nd Street we thought could be enhanced with a concept very similar to what you see here, where these panels could be attached to the exterior facade of the parking structure and they could, they could have things like photographs, historical images, art projects. They could have revolving types of exhibits on them as well. They're very cost effective and really, really quite dynamic. The fire station, again, towards OCFA standards, we have the apparatus space. You're increasing the apparatus space by one. We have associated office and ancillary functions which are related to the apparatus space. We have the dorm rooms, locker rooms, restrooms, day room and workout room. That's just a real quick look at the fire station, just so you can see how that fits into the overall plan. When we look at the building configuration, there are several things that go into determining what that configuration will be. Like we just talked about, the site configuration does have a major role, a major impact on the actual shape of the building. The whole idea of sustainability, lead certification, starts to identify the building configuration as we have to deal with how sunlight enters the building. We have to deal with prevailing breezes, landscape, open space, things like that. All of that starts to shape and form the building configuration. But probably the main thing are the internal functions, community spaces, public spaces. Those all really start to shape the, the configuration of the building. You'll see that because there's a real obvious building configuration based on how the departments and the staff lays out in the building itself. When we look at the old site plan with the parking structure and the fire station and we overlay the current site plan, you can see the changes in how they started, how they were affected by the internal workings of the building. The building is really user driven and that's really what started to decide, decide the site configuration as well as the building configuration. The desire to maintain the existing ficus and green space, the larger public space which now separates the parking structure from the City Hall itself, the direct connection from the parking structure directly into the City Hall. We now have a contiguous lobby space which actually joins the, the garden space to the front green space. It also joins our public spaces, both our community room and our, our council chambers, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on those later on. We have a link now from the stair tower of the parking structure which takes you directly through the lobby space. It's basically our east-west axis which starts to define the whole shape of the, the landscape plan and joins the parking structure all the way through to Newport Boulevard. Our one-stop shop, which I mentioned earlier, really started to drive the shape of the building because all of our building departments and functions wanted to revolve around that one-stop shop. As I mentioned before, the whole idea of sustainability. The broad face of our building opens towards the north, which is our best orientation to try and bring in as much north light as possible. Our east-west orientations are either solid or they're very filtered through arcade systems, landscape, things like that. We have two exterior stair elements, again relating to the climate in Newport Beach as well as the whole idea of sustainability, moving through the outdoor environment instead of the indoor environment. In addition, we have a service component which is pulled away from the public spaces, away from the garden spaces. And this would actually be the two-story component which spans over the one-story components. You get an idea of how there's actually more square footage downstairs than there is upstairs. We look at the landscape plan, a very simple, very effective landscape plan with our main public space being between the parking structure and the City Hall itself. We see this as being a real great opportunity as a sculpture garden and art space, but mostly as a public event space. There really was nothing like that in the old site plan. There's nothing like that currently in City Hall. We really have an opportunity here to bring the public to the building for events. In addition to that, we have an event plaza which opens off of the community room in the main public green space off of Newport Boulevard. So we have an event plaza that happens in the shade of the existing landmark ficus trees. We have a major landscape feature element which happens at the, the main wall of City Hall, which becomes sort of an icon and landmark element for the site plan. And again, our defining element which runs from the parking structure through the site plan and the main lobby space, we have an idea for this where it could be incorporated some sort of timeline element of the development of Newport Beach. We look specifically at City Hall. We wanted to kind of take a step back and show you how that we developed the floor plans for City Hall. Currently, you have 44,000 gross square feet of enclosed space. Your temporary trailers are 1,500 gross square feet. You currently use about 12,000 square feet of exterior space just for departmental circulation. If you've ever been in your planning area during a real busy day, you can see people rolling their drawings out on the sidewalks outside. So all of that has been incorporated into that 12,000 square feet just to get to trailers, get to the, the departments. That gives you a total existing square footage of about 57,500 square feet. The current building deficiencies, it does not currently meet ADA minimum standards. Again, there are seismic and public safety issues. It does not currently meet workspace minimum requirements. Right now, it does not meet minimum restroom requirements. Building circulation is very difficult. The building age is of course a factor mainly because of maintenance and operating costs. And there are lots of public space inefficiencies. In one word, there really isn't a lot of public space in the current facility. The program, once we started meeting with staff and with our building committee, we really started to look at growth projections and it was determined that an additional 4,000 square feet would help in the lifespan of the buildings. Public space increased throughout the facility. There is no current, current community room, which will be included in the new facility. That's about 2,000 gross square feet. The increased size of the council chambers, we're increasing capacity. We're adding a broadcast room, rear projection room. That's about 1,000 square feet. The increased circulation spaces, pre-function public event spaces, all of which really don't exist in the current facility, it's about 2,000 square feet. Increased restroom sizes, 1,500 square feet. Increased public counter area. So a lot of that stuff doesn't happen, happen, doesn't have to happen on the sidewalk out in front of the one-stop shop. It actually happens within the one-stop shop itself. That's about 1,500 square feet. So our total square footage now is 72,000 gross square feet. When we look at the first level, again, this is sort of a moving target. We're still meeting with staff and really starting to pin down the inner workings of the floor plan, but it's very close at this point. We have our entry from the parking structure into our main community lobby gallery space which joins our council chambers and our community room. The community room has direct access out to the public event plaza. We have our one-stop shop now which actually has visibility and access back out to the sculpture garden and the green space in between the parking structure and the City Hall. And then all of our departments which revolve around that one-stop shop. The goal here, since it was a two-story, it is a two-story building, to get all of the departments that deal directly with the public to be on that first level and have direct access to that one-stop shop. So we have recreation, admin services, fire administration, public works, planning, and the building department, all revolving around that one-stop shop with direct access to the planning counter. And then we have our ancillary services, storage, print rooms, Xerox, all things like that, receiving area, restrooms, conferencing space. Taking a larger look at the public spaces, the council chambers, community room, and the contiguous lobby and gallery space, that lobby space has a lot of opportunities for public art, historical displays, what have you. It has direct entries from, into the community room and the council chambers. So this lobby space can really become an active public environment. There is a direct link to the event plaza and the garden space at either end. This space also has the ability to be closed off, so it can, so it has after-hours use. Still with access to the restroom spaces. The one-stop shop, which you see directly above there. Whoops. There we go. Our take, closer look now at the one-stop shop and as well as the community room. Community room is, has the ability to be reconfigured depending on the function. You see it here more for a sit-down dinner. There's a large storage component where it gives us that ability so we can store tables, chairs, things like that. There's a warming kitchen which has direct access to both the community room as well as the council chambers, so we have to duplicate facilities within the council chambers themselves. And again, it has direct access out to the event plaza. The one-stop shop, which has really developed into more of a two-stop shop now, has all of the building departments, like I said, building, planning, public works, all around one counter. And then our recreation, community services department, when we met with staff, it really seemed like that needed to be in a separate environment because they deal with a whole separate type of clientele where there's a lot of children and families, things like that. So it helped us deal with a little bit more with noise and issues like that. So they had their own one-stop shop area, counter area, both accessed off the main lobby space. Within the one-stop shop now, we have a counter space that could be used by the public for rolling out drawings, things like that. There's plenty of seating area. Each of the departments has representation around that public counter space, so it's a much more efficient, much more public, user-friendly space. And again, direct access out to the sculpture garden. On the second level, we have our second level landing area which takes you from the stair, which is right here, and the elevator up to a two-story volume space, which actually is open to clear stories up above, so it's more like an atrium space. Directly around that lobby area, we have the city manager's office, the mayor and city council, human resources, city clerk, and then our staff lunchroom, which is actually revolving around a, an outside deck which opens back out to the sculpture, community garden space. Rounding out the second level, we have the city attorney, code enforcement, the remaining admin services area, public works, and fire administration. As well as our service areas, coffee areas, restrooms, and conference rooms. Now the aesthetic options, which I'm sure you're very interested in, what really starts to determine the aesthetics of the building, once again, is the function. The building really is designed around the function itself. The internal functions really start to define the building shape. Again, sustainability starts to determine where our openings are, are the material selections, how we protect from the sun, and the overall building configuration. And again, the whole idea of Newport Beach, this needed to be a building that reflected the uniqueness of Newport Beach. So we really tried to bring that into the aesthetic design. But overriding all of this was a responsible budget. The whole idea of Newport Beach, we really started to investigate a lot of the history, a lot of what makes Newport Beach what it is. And the things that really started to come out at us were the whole idea of water, sailing, the piers, all of that. The building really needed to have a reflection of those things within the design to really make it unique to Newport Beach. So what you're going to see right now is our base option. There's actually an option for enhancing the aesthetics of the building and we're going to be presenting that this evening as well. So if we look at the base option, this will be the view from 32nd Street towards the ficus trees. You start to get a real good idea of what the building will look and feel like on the site. The palm trees that you see here are actually the existing palm trees which are currently in place. We purposely took out the ficus trees so you can see the building, but the magical click of a button. This is what the building would look like actually with the ficus trees. You can see the building starts to revolve around the landscape. I think right now, the building really starts to give the ficus trees a place to be, whereas right now in the site plan, they just sort of exist out in the front lawn. Now the building will actually revolve around those ficus trees. And again, they're used to shade the event plaza in the foreground. The whole idea of water, you could start to really see being defined by this front wall element, which becomes an icon or a landmark element for the building. We're actually looking at doing a form work within the concrete itself that'll start to shape and delineate that waveform that you see there. The idea of the sails are in the forms of clear story elements which allow light into some of the spaces and some of the office spaces down below. These will be translucent abstractions of sails that'll be placed on the roof elements so at night they'll glow from inside. The whole idea of the pier, it's a little difficult to see here, but the form that joins the entire building, that second level form, will have an abstracted element which represents the pier and it'll be accented by a light feature which runs all the way across the entire facade of the facility. Roger brought up the idea of harbor lights. The whole idea of the, the rest of the building came from more the traditional sense of the City Hall, the whole idea of that colonnade or, you know, marching up to the steps of City Hall, that type of thing. The, the whole form of that starts to reflect that whole idea of the colonnade, opening up with as much glass as possible, especially in that corner where you have the community room. Wrapping around that corner, again, sustainability comes into play with the idea of protecting that southern exposure and also giving a lot of animation and a lot of play to the 32nd Street facade. You can see in the corner here how that facade begins to break down and you see the deck behind there, which again relates to the sculpture garden. Again, all around the building too, we're also incorporating operable windows so you can take advantage of natural ventilation. All the skylights and things like that that you saw both in the lobby space as well as in the sails themselves will be vented to allow for that cross-ventilation to happen. Now we take another view looking from Newport Boulevard, basically from the entrance to the retail component. You start to get a real good idea of, again, the water, the sails, and the pier. Here you have that water wall, the sails themselves, the pier element which happens and starts to join the entire facility together. One thing you also happen to have here is the north elevation which allows that light and that, the glass and the views into the building as well as out of the building. You have the express stair which you see here. What you're not seeing here, so that we can show you the elevation a little more clearly, is a garden wall which creates an employee garden space along that north elevation. When we look at the enhancements, they're really taking this initial design and sort of turning up the volume on a lot of the metaphors that we discussed.
The base building option that you've just seen is a building option, if you recall, on the 10th of May.
If you recall, on the 10th of May, when we came before council and council selection, selected budgetary option three. And our charge was to design a building that could meet that budget. And what you see here in front of you as the base building option is a building that meets the budget that was approved by council on the 10th of May. Subsequent to that, in the course of our building committee meetings and, and what have you, there was a desire and a direction by members of the building committee to explore facade enhancements and some alternative options to the base building from a design standpoint. Now what Rick is going to present to you are the options to the base building design or a facade enhancement. The floor plans remain essentially the same, so we're keeping the same structural system and mechanical system and all of the, for lack of a better word, the, the internal organs of the building. But we are dealing with opportunities for facade enhancement. When he's done with that, he's also going to present to you two options for expansion so that this building can be expanded in the future. And at the end, when we're all done with all of that, I'm going to give you a very quick summary on the cost implications of going beyond the base building to a facade enhancement or to a facade enhancement with options or just the expansion options without the facade enhancement. So as usual, I like to give you options and information and you make the decisions.
Actually, we're going to go a little backwards from that. We're going to show the expansion option first. This was the view of the second level. You can see here, these are the single-story elements on either side of the building. Our expansion option actually moves out over both of these elements with a 5,000 square foot potential for expansion here and a 3,000 square foot potential for expansion on the other side. We've decided to take this side and actually hold it back from Newport Boulevard, so it'll still be that step and that progression from Newport Boulevard itself. So the building won't have that two-story expression right on the street. This is the overall site plan. There were some concerns and some issues that were brought up in our building committee meeting, so we decided to address those with our enhanced option. Some of those concerns were the proximity to Newport Boulevard. We were about 25 feet, six inches away from the curb line at our pinch point here. That was brought up as a concern. In addition, the, the form of the building was rather square, so what we decided to try to do was break down the form of the building in several areas to break down the formality of the box shapes. The whole idea of detail and material enhancement also came up as, as an enhancement. So this is now the new shape of the building. Again, most of the interior functions remain the same because we've had some very detailed meetings with staff and so we didn't want to throw that design work out. So we decided to maintain the internal functions of the space as well as the structure of the space. But there are two significant changes. One would be this area up here. We've actually taken that wall and curved it away from Newport Boulevard. That does two things for us. It relieves that, that feeling of being pinched up against the street. It also opens up views in both directions, one towards the City Hall itself and one towards the retail component directly above the City Hall that you see here. In addition, we've also taken the building and broken it down in this area here so that it, now that, now it steps down towards that central courtyard space, so it alleviates the, the two-story wall on that corner element. We've also added a canopy over the north stair. Originally, only the south-exposed stair as well as the internal stair were protected, so now we've added a canopy element over the north stair so that could be used in, in climate weather as well. So now what you're going to see again, once again, it's the same first view that you saw of the last option. Now you start to see, it's a little difficult to see. Now, you start to see, it's a little difficult to see here, but the curved wall here. One thing that we also did is we curved the top of that wall, and now the entire wall becomes that sort of wave metaphor. We've carried the fluting all the way up the wall, so it becomes much more striking. You'll see it when we look at it from the other direction. The sail size has been slightly increased in this option as well, but the main change really comes in the form of this wall here, but that really starts to play into the whole nautical metaphor that we're dealing with. That wall now curves up and around the corner. In addition, a lot more material detail has been added to that wall, which you'll see in just a moment. And once again, you can see the impact of the ficus trees on that space. We've actually reduced those down a little bit, too, so you can see a little bit more of the City Hall, so they do have quite a bit of impact on the whole front facade of City Hall. We look again at the new element on the corner. It still maintains the colonnade feature that we talked about, but now we've added this sort of graceful curve to the top of the parapet. We've also added the element of these recesses in the columns to break down the mass of the columns. We've added some more sun control in the form of vertical fin elements, which starts to protect that east-west orientation. Again, we've maintained the operable windows. We've also added lighting elements, which uplight those columns, as you see here, which will give a much more dramatic presence at night. Then, we wrap around the corner. It's a little difficult to see here, but this is showing how the arcade element actually stops. The deck element is then allowed to protrude out into the Sculpture Garden and courtyard Now, you're looking at the opposite view, again, a much more dynamic view, with the curved wall that could be uplit at night. There's translucent glass, which allows light to emanate from inside the building. The sails now resting over the water. You see the pier still happening in the background, and now, again, you've got the form, which rises above, beyond the ficus trees in the back here. Once again, you see the north elevation with the glass and the light pouring out from the internal spaces. We take a larger view of that. You really get a great idea of how strong that wall can be along Newport Boulevard, the fact that it's curving away from you, the fluting, which extends all the way up to the top of that parapet. Now, that becomes a real wonderful signage feature for our city seal, which we're looking at relocating the one that currently exists on the outside of the council chambers today. Here, you see the addition of the canopy, which protects that north stair. Again, the garden wall here is not shown, but that creates that employee courtyard space down below on the north elevation. Now, we look at the option comparisons. This is basically the base option that we looked at earlier, and the enhanced option. The idea is that the enhancements are really a shopping list, like Roger talked about earlier. You can pick and choose pieces, so the buildings work very well together. The view, the other view, and the enhanced view. And Roger?
First of all, I'd suggest to you that enhancement is a relative term, and probably highly subjective, based upon your own interpretation or sense of aesthetic. It's an interesting thing, because Newport Beach is one of those cities that's blessed by having a diversity of architectural style. I would imagine that if we were to cull through the city, we'd probably find, at least on a residential level, maybe 10 different types of architectural style. We'd find contemporary, we'd find Bauhaus, we'd find French Normandy, we'd find Tuscan, we'd find Old English Tudor, and I'm sure that each resident of that individual home feels that his or her design idiom is the superior design idiom. So by subjectivity, I really think that that's something to always keep in mind when judging a design or design aesthetic. I would also share with you, from my point of view, anyway, that this building is designed from the inside out. So what we have is we have a series of internal functions, which determine the plan. The plan determines the shape, it has to be overlaid against the limitations and boundaries of the site, and then it has to be married up with a budget. So the base-building option that Rick showed you meets all of those criteria. The enhanced facade, or the expansion options, are exactly that, and those are options for your consideration. Now, I'm going to show you very quickly a summary budget here. And on the first one, it's the City Hall, community room, new council chambers, the site work, and indirect cost, lead commissioning. This was the City Hall budget that was approved by the City Council, which we use for the basis as the base-building design, and this was the approval given on the 10th of May as the basis for moving forward. The line item B is the programmatic increase that Rick talked about. The 68,000, it was actually 68,100 square feet, to be precise, was the program that was originally approved by the City Council on, I believe it was in June of 2002. Subsequently, there has been some additions to that program made by the user groups and by some of the public-serving areas, which increased the building size from 68,000 to 72,000 gross square feet. That also portends a need to increase the parking structure to accommodate the additional stalls that a square-footage increase requires. I had originally and conveniently projected $1,008,000 as the roundhouse number at a Building Committee meeting. It's $1,784,000. Okay? The next item is the facade enhancements, and I have a breakdown and could go through this categorically with you, what that entails, but that's $2,940,000. Now, you don't have to pick that facade enhancement. You could pick parts of the facade enhancement. You could pick none of it. You could stay with the base building and go right back to the budget that was approved by council on 10th of May. And last is the add, and this is structural capability, and if we're going to add structure to take the 8,000-square-feet of expansion options, this is the cost, not only to structurally change the structural system and portions of the building, to go from a light-gauge-metal framing into a steel framing, but it's also the need to increase to a one-hour rating throughout because of the future add of space, and it's also increase within the parking structure to provide what I'll call beefed-up structures, so that at a later date, you can add additional stalls to the parking structure. You have to do the structural adds now. You cannot come back and retrofit a parking structure, where the cost will be brutally prohibitive. Depending on which you want to choose, or what you want to choose, you can either stay with the budget, you can agree to the programmatic increase, which had been approved at the Building Committee level, which is what these designs are based on tonight, for the $1,008,000. You can add facade enhancements, all are in part, to the $2,009,000, and you can add the structural capability. If you total those all above, this is where you end up. Now, this evening, I have with me pretty much representatives of all the key disciplines of our project team. So I have with me Steve Mickle, who's our Director of Construction, formerly with Swinburne Builders. Steve's been in the business about 20 years, has built some major projects, both with us and with Swinburne. I have representatives from LPA, both principals and one of the primary owners, Dan Heinfeld, Newport Beach residence. I also have with me representatives Howard S. Wright Construction, who's built several projects with us. They've been in business over 100 years. They do about $600 million a year, maybe a little more this year. I have representatives of Culp and Tanner. I actually have the real deal. I have Mr. Culp here, who, they are a very well-regarded, very large structural engineering firm. They are the structural engineers of this project. I have Mr. Ken Kaino here, who is the principal of Tushyaman Kaino, who are the mechanical engineers of the project, also have been around for a very long time, done all kinds of projects throughout California. And I have Ms. Dina Gartland here, who is a principal of Leighton Associates, who did all of the geotechnical engineering work, which is all done on this project, and also did the Phase 1 hazmat environmental work on the project, and she's here. So I guess we're prepared to field questions from the esoteric to the technical, depending on your mood and your interest. Thank you.
I'd like to go back to why we're here tonight. We're here tonight because, for, I mean, for all of us, it's the first time I've seen the enhancements. For the rest of the, the majority of this council, maybe the first time they've seen any of this. So I think we better start from a conceptual basis first, before we go to the enhancements. We better talk about the site plan. That would be where I'd start. You always start with the real estate, my business. What piece of land are you building on, and deal with the City Hall issue? I'd like input from the council, I mean, just as to the general layout that's being proposed. For instance, I hate to say this, but what this building revolves around are two ficus trees. It's been designed to keep the ficus trees, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that, but that's a primary design configuration as to how you use this site, and we should kind of go from there and the rest of the, I don't, I'm not supposing I have a position. It's more, what is the council's initial read on the layout on this, on our piece of land here for the new City Hall?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, well, you talked about the ficus trees. That was kind of one of the first things that came to my mind as I was looking at this presentation, is so much of it seems to be designed around those trees. Did we consider moving the trees and relocating them on the site?
With all due respect, I think that maybe Rick was a little overly enthusiastic about his support and illustration of the ficus trees. Frankly, if you recall, this entire design is designed from the inside out. Those ficus trees, from my point of view, they don't impact, they don't add, they don't detract from the space plan or the interior function of the building. That building is designed on a departmental adjacency function, community service basis.
No, but my point is, what if you, because we're concerned about its approach on Ball Bowl Boulevard, you flipped that building around, took the horizontal portion, flipped it to on 32nd Street, and flipped the whole building around? Issues like that, I mean, primary design issues, and I think the council should weigh in, as should the public, who are paying for all this, and saying, was that an option? Or is this the only way this thing could have been laid out? Because that's how you start dealing with, and I'm not an architect, and you guys are vastly more experienced. I'd like input from you first, if this was the only option for the site, and number two, and then input from the council.
Now, we did actually look at flipping the site, but it did work much better in this configuration, mostly from an internal standpoint. If we flipped it, it really started to run havoc with our service, with our, just entering City Hall. The whole thing started to really kind of back up on us. This was really done, starting with the one-stop-shop, and it built out from there, so it really was the best functioning site plan for us. I think it's just really a perk that we were able to maintain the ficus trees, since they are such an important icon to the City Hall as it currently exists.
Well, can you tell us why it only works laid out that way? I mean, just in a, in two sentences, why it has to be like this?
Well, basically, if we were just to take the floor plan as it is and flip it around, you're then going to be entering everything off of the service drive up at the top there, which isn't your main drive, whereas now, we're able to enter the site exactly, we're able to enter the site vehically, exactly where we enter from a pedestrian standpoint, which is ideal. It's just going to be much clearer for the user of the building, plus for the people visiting the building. It really started to also enhance our public spaces, to place them in the configuration that they're in, entering off of that corner of 32nd and Newport Boulevard, made a much stronger statement than flipping that around.
Okay, good.
I've got a couple more questions on it. This is on the site plan. Where would you describe being the front of the building? Is the front on 32nd Street? Is it on Newport Boulevard? I mean, where is the front of the building?
That was one thing we talked about very early on. There really isn't a front. The entire building is very much four-sided, and we're very cognizant of that in the design. From a pedestrian standpoint, you can enter the building from the parking structure side, as well as the Newport Boulevard side. We have a, there'll be a wonderful pedestrian entry from 32nd Street directly into the Sculpture Garden. So really, all of the building becomes animated. We do have, actually, an employee entry from the north facade through the employee courtyard, which gives them direct access to the retail site. So really, all sides of the building become energized and activated.
David, every building needs a front door. I mean, if I was walking down the street and I wasn't going into the parking garage, what would tell me where to go into the building?
Actually, that would probably be the garden space.
Besides signs?
Yeah. No, that'd be the garden space. You can, there'll be an entry off of Newport Boulevard, through the timeline element, past the Event Plaza, you'll be able to actually enter directly into the building.
It's right here.
Thank you.
It's right here, Councilman Sullivan. Let me see if I can get this thing.
So you see the walkway from the corner, which actually orientates you directly.
And there's your entry from Newport Boulevard, and then this is the entry coming in off of the parking structure. So for those few pedestrians who do walk along Newport Boulevard and enter the City Hall, that's your entry point, and it'll be the sidewalk, and it'll be very well-defined. This is just a concept site plan. For those people who arrive by vehicle, they'll either come in this way, or they'll come in this way, depending on where they park their car.
The really great thing about the way the site plan works is everyone that's parking at City Hall passes that guard space and sees that main entry, so you're automatically oriented and know where you need to go, just by parking at City Hall.
The other thing I have a question on is that whole service area up there, next to the shopping center. How is that going to be treated when you're coming down Newport Boulevard and you're looking at all that area?
Well, it's actually different in both schemes, but in either scheme, you really won't be able to see it at all. If you give me the pointer, I can do this a little bit. From a circulation standpoint, I'll show you that first. What we've done is we've provided an area here, where service vehicles can actually turn out from the entry drive, so there won't be any sort of stacking issues along that entry drive itself. So if there is already a truck in queue here, someone could actually turn into a space that's specifically allotted for the service area, and then back into the service area once it's clear. There's actually a garden wall situation, which happens at this level, and then a very thick landscape element here. So what's a truck is actually at the service dock. It's completely obscured from view from Newport Boulevard through the use of the garden wall and that landscape element. So the only time you'll see trucks that are actually in service, they'll actually be in queue for service, but you won't see them at the loading dock. You won't see the loading dock from Newport Boulevard. It's not a real high-intense use, loading area. It's basically just a roll-up door. There isn't a dock or anything like that.
Rick, are those vehicles going to have to back out, or is there room for a turnaround?
No, no, no. You actually come in straight, back in, and then you're able to pull out straight, so you don't have to back in and out of there, which will make movement very easy.
Okay, then, just to get back to the ficus trees, not to beat a dead horse here, but since this building was designed from the inside out, if you were to place those ficus trees, would you place them where they are now, or would you put them somewhere else if you were trying to optimize how they work with the building?
I really kind of like how they're working with the building, just because you're actually using them now. You're using the shade for the Event Plaza, and I think you're using them now to really demarcate that facade of the building. I don't think I could see them anywhere else on the site.
Can I weigh in on a comment you've repeatedly made, so our residents don't get the idea that part of your budget includes a sculpture garden? I think it does not.
Right.
There is no sculpture at all. There is a, it's a conceptual issue, that at some point, some arts, somebody in the city or Arts Commission may do something in the grass area between the parking structure and the east side of the planned City Hall. There is no, I don't want the residents to think that in this budget, there's some sculpture, some extravaganza, that we've gone from this facility to a sculpture garden in one gulp.
To answer your question, Mayor Heffernan, there is no sculpture in this project. What there is, is we do have to have, if I suppose I could catch the lights for a second, these lights are brutal.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, what you do have, I'm trying, Rick. There you go. What you do have is you have a paved area and a grass area, and that's about it, okay? This, frankly, is probably going to be textured colored concrete, and this is grass. Now, this, I do have to have some walkways, and I do have to have some grass areas, and that's what this is. Now, as far as sculpture goes, this is really just the background. If the Arts Commission should foster a sculpture exhibition, they have at least one place where they can place that sculpture, but no sculpture is included in the permanent or in the cost of the project, just the flatwork and the grass.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to clear that up. Okay, I think this is important, because this is the base conceptual time for the City Council to weigh in on what they're seeing, because we're moving along, this project moves pretty fast. Anybody else? Mr. Nichols?
I've had one problem with the way the fire department's been placed, and that is typically, the fire department uses all this space for parking around there, so you end up where you have to back into the places where they're going to put their trucks anyway, and it seemed like if you turned that, so it was along 32nd Street, you could pull in and pull out of the parking garage for the fire department, and it just made more sense as a way to make it go. Now, I understand that, gee, we're supposed to pull around that, but that's about the most inefficient thing I've ever seen, and number two, look at the parking lot around the present fire department, and you'll see you can't do anything except move a bunch of cars if you were going to ever try and move a fire truck.
I can address that. We did look at several solutions that placed the I can address that. We did look at several solutions that placed the fire station parallel to Thirty Second Street, as you had suggested. Frankly, all of those did not find favor with Chief Riley, nor the members of his department. This solution, as shown, was the optimal solution from their standpoint. The reason is that prior to a call, the apparatus sits in these bays right here, the trucks and the paramedic and what have you. As soon as there is a call, an alarm, they come right out, in fact, Chief Riley is suggesting what they call bi-fold doors, which pop open in a second. And they will come right out here and go right out to wherever it is they have to go to make their service call. On the return, when they are post-emergency or post-service, they will come down Thirty Second Street, and they will turn right in here, and that's the required turning radius, and they go right back in a slot and wait for the next call. All the parking for the fire station is right back here. So along that far wall, no more moving of cars around or what have you, so that in an emergency circumstance, bang, they come right out, and when they return, they come up right here, and they're almost within their, they are within their own dedicated portion of the site. And that is the optimal layout from the chief's perspective. I do believe that next week, we will be talking in greater detail about the fire station, and I'm under the assumption that perhaps Chief Riley or representatives of the fire department will be here to weigh in on, on the configuration of the site. But to, to give you credit, we did look at all the alternatives, and this was the one that was selected by the fire department by ten. It wasn't even close.
I can understand that. It provides a lot more parking, and therefore, they could, you know, have parking for twenty-five cars instead of five along the end or so.
No, I think there's enough parking there for the two shifts. I think there's probably five people per shift, so there's ten parking spaces.
There's actually fifteen on site.
Okay. Well, and part of the use of space is because you have to have a big turning radius for these big trucks. You can see that site, it, you can't shoehorn in these trucks. They need, they need the radius to make that turn and then end up facing the street in the garage. And that's, that's part of the inefficiency of the site.
Well, in addition to, if we did turn the fire station, then they'd have to actually make a right turn as they're coming out. And that's really inefficient for them. They like to be able to come straight out to the street in which they're servicing.
And go.
Right.
Their turn coming in and out would be very minor, much less than the turn they meet when they get down to the street. When they get down to the street and make that right angle turn, it's certainly a lot easier to make a little forty-five turn out of the building.
I think that, that, you know, that, that's an interesting point. We certainly looked at it. If you can envision shifting the fire station, and to recall Homer, Mr. Blutau's comments, the primary focus of the meeting tonight is the city hall, and the fire station will be next week. But to look at that, if we, son of a.
[laughing]
Sorry. If you turned this thing sideways, the trucks would have to come out and go like that, almost in a U-turn, okay? Now they come out and go.
They can come around the back and drive right through and, and be parked.
Well, no. Well, I think it's, this is, since we, this is laid out, so that fire station, the layout of it's pretty well set. In other words, it's going to occupy that portion of the site. Maybe we can delay this, that part of the discussion until two weeks from now, where we're going to be dealing with the parking structure and the fire, the layout of the fire station. That was the intent, to just focus on the, the largest cost item of the night, which was the city hall.
And changing that fire station would change the whole layout here. It would require a total redesign of the way the city hall is, is now situated.
Okay. Mr. Webb?
Yes. When I first saw the, I guess I'd call it the base box design, I was one of the ones that, that was concerned with the edge that's closest to Finley, because I felt that, that it was, the green area was a little bit too narrow. It focused too much on the entry of, of service vehicles at that point, and at a place where there is a lot of commercial traffic going in and out of the shopping center. So I, I believe that the enhanced alternative has greatly improved that end of the building, and has greatly softened the hard corner. That's the hard corner right there. Now, show the.
Sorry.
Because we have a curve that, that wraps around onto the Finley side, that, that it has become a much more palatable design than, see, that design is a very hard corner design. The rounded area gives us an opportunity to, to kind of more ease into the building, you might say. And so that, I feel that, that the enhanced option is one that we should seriously consider.
And that's actually forty-five feet now from the curb line. So we went from twenty-five to forty-five feet of landscape.
Just as, just as an aside, as I mentioned earlier, you, you have a series of, of options, and you don't have to take any of them, or you don't, you can take them all. But for example, if what you wanted to do was take this curve, but maintain the base building option, you can do that, for example, okay? You, you, you have sort of a palette here. And the question is, what, if anything, do you want to consider as, as the alternative options to the base building?
But what you showed us was a $2,009 enhancement, and on a $29 million base building. So basically, ten percent, we're going to increase the cost of the building, ten percent for these enhancements, if you did all of them. I mean, based upon your cost schedule.
If you did, if you did everything, that is correct. But there are lesser options or pieces and parts that you could select also. For example, if you decided that you just wanted to go with this curved wall and reconfiguration over here of the, of the shipping or, or materials arrival level, you could do that, okay, without having to change anything in this building. You could change the things in this building and keep this straight. It's sort of a palette of what you want to do. Now, I mention that because Councilman Webb is, is or has been focused on that condition of that wall and that sort of condition at Finley. So I wanted to make the point that you have, it's not an either-or, it's an either-and/or-but.
Well, I think one of the things that you should include in that palette is saying, well, if we're trying to get the most out of the money, what would it cost to add that eight thousand feet, keep the building square? What would that cost? Not just, not just put the structure into it, but build it out right from the, right now. In other words, well, how much would that cost to add that eight thousand feet now, add the addition of the parking structure now? That, that would be viewed as an optional enhancement as well, to do the entire build-out.
We can do that. We can develop that information.
Well, I mean, then we'll have, we'll have more, more things to think about. Any input from the council on the base design?
We're just talking about the site plan. Have we talked about all of it?
Just the site plan, just how this lays out.
Well, we'll get, we'll get to the elevation.
Well, I, I got some comments on the floor plan, too. But did you consider putting the parking structure off of Finley, and then taking the, the city hall and having the city hall down towards Thirty Second Street Newport Boulevard more?
That was actually one of the very early options that we looked at. The problem is this, the parking structure takes up so much room that that became the front door to your city hall, was a parking structure. So it felt more appropriate to put the city hall structure itself out on the street and bury the parking structure behind that. You're not even going to really see the parking structure from Newport Boulevard in this scheme, whereas if we did reverse that, that would be the only thing that you would see.
Is that because of the height of the parking structure?
The height, the mass. I mean, you could just pretty much picture taking that and trying to put that off of Finley. It wouldn't fit in this direction. Right now, the length of the parking structure is determined by the ramping system, so it can't get any shorter than what you're seeing right now, because it's pretty bare bones minimum. So by taking that, you'd have to put it in the same configuration as you see it now, because it doesn't fit if you turn it. So that became the major icon on that corner, was this going to be a four-story parking structure.
Okay.
Four levels.
Any other, any other council comment on the layout? Okay, then, maybe we can, the next step would be the internal layout?
Sure.
Ms. Selig?
Yeah, one of the big focuses seems to be on that one-stop-shop concept. And I don't have benefit of any dimensions or anything there, but it looks kind of small in the, in the, in the drawings, and I'm not sure whether I'm getting the actual scale of it in here. But maybe one thing you could tell me, what is the linear foot of that counter space compared to what we have now? Maybe that'll help me figure out what we're doing here.
Well, if you look here, you see these demarcations, these lines?
Uh-huh.
Each one of those is five feet. So every one of the spots that we're showing now at the planning counter has five feet in, in length, three feet in depth. So each department has a certain amount of those spaces on the planning counter itself. So right now, you've got five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty, forty, forty-five, fifty. Fifty-five feet just for the planning and building departments. I think right now, you've got thirty-five feet. But then that also does not include your recreation and community services counter, your cashiers, which were here, and your admin services counter. So you add all that up, and I think we've got.
Rick, I think you have space, though, for public works and also for fire people that deal with, with building plans.
Correct. Yes, yes. Sorry, I had to say that.
So I guess you lost me now, because you're adding fire and, and public works into the building and planning counter?
Right.
The, the concept behind the one-stop-shop is that if you come to the city, you can literally deal with every single department in a single location and just move linearly right down the line. Or if you have a specific use, you can come just to that counter or counters, if it's a public works question. Now, what we did do was we, because of the fact that a lot of mothers come in with strollers and with their children in hand when they come in to deal with the recreation department, we segmented that, put that closest to the entry, and created a, frankly, a glassed-in but secure area, so when the mother or parent comes to the counter with his or her young child and, and wants to do something with the recreation department, she doesn't have to worry about that child running off, because the area has a, has a glassed-in, sort of a, an enclosed space. The cashier's area, because people pop in and out to pay bills, is, is closest then of the one-stop-shop to the door. You're also going to be able to come right in off that public courtyard area, directly into the one-stop-shop, without even passing through the lobby. Now, I will tell you that we've done a lot of city halls, and this is one of the larger one-stop shops we've ever done. Period. So as far as, as comparison goes, it's on, on the very higher end of the scale as far as size, and in turn, though, it's all function-driven.
Well, one of the things you do see in this plan is that, where you come in, the front door, the first thing you see is a recreation department, which I thought was odd, until they told us, how many people do they see a year? Homer?
I, I don't know. Ten thousand, maybe.
It was like 10,000 people visit the rec department, which is behind these chamber, chambers over here. And that's why it's where it is. So it's, it's trying to get, you know, that function where it should be.
It's all user-driven.
We also have, as soon as you come into the, into the lobby, there is a reception desk, which also serves as visual security, because it can see the entire lobby area. So as soon as someone comes in, there's immediately someone to, to serve them or direct them or point them in whatever direction they need. If somebody comes in and says, where's the community room? And they can direct them, if they have to, if they're there for a council meeting, a special study session in the afternoon, if they need to know where to go for rec, as soon as you walk in, bingo, it's right there.
If I could say one other thing, I think you will have noticed from the first floor and second floor, that some of the departments are divided, that some are downstairs and others are, portions of those departments are upstairs. So the thinking here is that those people in the departments that deal directly with the public and have most of the public access are going to be downstairs. And more of the administrative clerical people are going to be upstairs. So that really works. When they say farm-over-function, it's trying to get as many people as deal directly with the public. Not that fire administration and city council and city manager and city clerk aren't going to deal with the public, we are. But probably eighty-five percent of the visits to city hall should be accommodated by downstairs without having to go upstairs.
I would also add as a footnote that this site, this, this floor plan evolved from a very detailed needs assessment and program. And we have been working this, I guess the best word I can use is exhaustively, with staff. We have gone foot by foot, office by office, adjacency by adjacency, function by function, with every single department head. And recently, in one of our past building committee meetings, Mayor Heffernan did in fact ask several of the department heads to come in and discuss suitability of their space, which I think was, was favorably presented. So we have worked this based not only on your specific requirements, but based upon what I would call considerable experience in design and development of city halls.
Well, let me be more specific. We have the department heads come in, and I challenged them point-blank and said, this is your area. Why do you think this will improve what you have now? Because the reason we're doing this is to improve our ability to serve our residents. And if you're in the planning department, how does this make you better serve our residents, specifically? Because if you're the poster boy for this improvement, this better improve the situation, or we're not, we're not spending the citizens' money wisely. And it was very, it was that specific, you know, to challenge them, to say, is this big enough? Is this laid out enough? Are you on the right floor? Or do you have enough counter space? Do you have enough offices, et cetera? And it was, and it was very favorably received, because I think our consultants have built a lot of city halls, and their space planners are very efficient. And you'll notice this thing is built on a, on the ninety-degree platform. There's not a lot of wasted space. Can I have input on the rest of the council? Mr. Selig?
Yeah, I just need my question clarified. So we have thirty-five feet of counter space for building, planning, and public works now, and we're going to have, what, fifty-five or fifty-seven feet here? Is that what you were saying?
There's fifty-five.
Fifty-five, okay.
In addition to additional counter space, just for the public to lay out drawings and things like that.
Okay. And then, while you have that drawing up there, what's the square footage of the area in blue?
I believe it's three thousand square feet.
Okay, thanks.
Other council input? Mr. Nichols?
I just, I have one other question or thought, and that is that when we've surveyed our present facility, we've said that it's horribly obsolete. Each portion was designed for a specific purpose, and yet, twenty years later, it just doesn't work hardly at all. And my question is, is, is this sort of the open design on the building, that if we did choose to, to change from one-stop to a departmental-type functions that you have in most businesses, that that could be done? And is it, is it an open structure that can be remodeled like that, if, if that is desirable in the future? Or is this fixed?
Yeah, basically, the, the structural system is very, very simple, and we've taken all of our offices and located them around the perimeter, so that we could really keep that floor space as open as possible. A lot of what you see here are actually open workstations. In addition to that, there's already been growth inherently as part of the, the program that was developed. So there are spaces in here that are already determined to accommodate future growth. So there is a lot of room for growth and flexibility and change in the future, in addition to the potential of, of adding the eight thousand square feet, which would really free up a lot more space.
The, kind of the, heading into the topic of future growth, I'd like the one-stop center, and appreciate that many of our residents can have their service provided there. So it kind of begs the question, why do you need that much office space? You know, where are we going in the future? What about virtual workstations? Do you have people working at home one day a week and lessening the need for square footage? I, I see in the next fifty years that we're going to be adopting new ways of thinking and doing things, that not everyone's going to have to come to an office. And so I, I guess my question, maybe some feedback from the others, do we really need to plan for all this future expansion?
Well, we, we've, what we did was, at the direction of the building committee, we looked at the structural, adding the structural capability today to expand tomorrow. Now, I've heard it mentioned today by Mr., by Mayor Heffernan, that he would like us to also look at what happens if we built the space today, which is just a numeric exercise, which we will do, and, you know, you discuss the number. We'll do that before the next meeting for sure. I may even have that by tomorrow, you never know. The long and short of it is that when you look at this project, our, our expertise and our experience and our analysis of your planning and programming and your space needs or, or needs assessment is that you're going to sort of flatten out here, okay? A lot of the expansion that you needed to undergo as a city from a staff standpoint, specifically in areas like water quality, there've been new legislations on that, the result of the annexation of the Newport Coast area and, and the impact that that had on staff requirements. This design takes all that into effect, and there is some expansion space built into this, okay? I tend to look at these drawings, I know this is going to sound a lot maybe, I'm showing my age, but when I look at these drawings, I squint. my age, but when I look at these drawings, I squint. And the reason is that everything disappears but the built walls, and you can really get a good look at what's open and what's not. Almost everything inside is systems furniture. You can move, reconfigure, relay out that any way you want. The walls themselves are just drywall partitions, those can be reconfigured. So you have a lot of flexibility. So to respond to your comment, frankly, I think that if it were me, what I'd probably do is I'd hedge my bet, I'd probably build the structural to take future building, but I wouldn't build the building. I wouldn't build the eight thousand square feet of expansion today, okay? Unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't get a vote. So at the end of the day, it's your call. But if I were going to make what I thought was the prudent decision, I would make a decision today that allowed future councils, who knows when, down the road, the ability to expand this building if for some reason they wanted to do so. But I don't think that expansion is going to be necessary. It's my personal view.
It's my understanding when we had the original calculations for the present square footage that that was based, what's been factored in is a twenty percent expansion of the current workforce. So we already have present twenty percent that we don't have today.
Call that, that needs assessment was completed and presented to council, I believe, I don't recall the exact month, but I'll say mid-two thousand and two. We're now sitting in mid-two thousand and five, okay, for a building that would not be open until two thousand and seven. And a lot of the expansion or growth has already occurred. It was projected to occur, and it did occur. So what you have is you have a slight increase of an additional four thousand, actually thirty-nine hundred square feet, which reflects some of the growth, frankly, in the public areas, like the community room and expansion of the council chambers, expansion of the one-stop shop, that is a large one-stop shop, those kind of areas. So I think that you're going to be fairly static from this point forward. There may be some internal reconfigurations, but people remodel their homes all the time without adding on a wing, okay? I think that the prudent decision might be, if you wanted to treat expansion, to consider the structural capability here and in the parking structure, but I'd be reluctant to recommend that you build the space out. It's your choice, but it's what I think.
You have a council comment on the interior layout? Okay, let's...
You know, I guess I do have a quick comment. And I know Roger said that the one-stop shop is one of the larger ones you've seen, but really, it's only about five percent of the whole building, isn't it? You said it was three thousand square feet?
Yeah, about that.
That's about, that's about right.
I mean, it seems like that's where all the activity is. It doesn't seem too small to me, maybe even...
Well, I think there's some things unique about the building that takes place in Newport Beach. One, we don't have the large planned developments where they have five-floor plans, so you get those plans, plan-checked, and then you build, you know, five hundred homes based upon five plans. Now, the work that gets done in Newport Beach is individual, and that's why you have a lot more activity per capita in Newport Beach than that would be using that space than you do in a lot of other cities.
No, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm saying it's not, maybe not big enough. I mean, it seems like that's, we do have a lot of activity there, and it's a small portion of the building.
Well, I think, you know, we started out having more space, and we ended up cutting it down to try and make it fit and make sure that we didn't go over what was needed. I think staff is very happy with the amount of counter space that there is.
Where's the cashier in that lobby or that one-stop shop?
And that's the utility people, you know, they're taking the water billing right there.
Pay your building fees too.
What?
Pay your building fees.
I'm having a hard time seeing it. Are there other entrances further down?
Yeah.
How many entrances are there?
I will blow it up here for a minute. There is the main entrance to the lobby here, and there's your, I don't know what you call this person.
Receptionist.
Receptionist, okay? There's an adjacent one right here, which someone can come in. There's one right here. There's another one up here. This is your cashier areas. These are your counter areas for planning and public works and police-fire. And so basically, this is that open area between the parking structure, which is over here, and that area that's paved. So this is a high-trafficed area, so people can come in at different locations and walk right in. And the reason it's designed that way is because you do have a high traffic. You do have a high volume, people coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. So the idea is here is if you're coming in and you need to see everybody, you just work your way right around like that. If you're coming in just to see the cashier, you can come in like this, like this, like this. If you're coming in with your children or by yourself to go to parks and rec, you come right in here without ever having to go into that portion of the area. So it's really a segmented one-stop shop, and yet it's all in one location.
How do you envision that people coming to city hall are going to know what area they need to be in? Is that going to be through signage?
Yeah, graphics and signage. And most people, by nature, will walk in here, and this will all have signage, walk in here, this will, each department will have its signage overhead. It's sort of like going into a shopping or retail center where you see the signage of the various aisles, it's sort of like produce and meat and...
Well, I understand once you're in there and, you know, you got, you're in a big room and you look around and say, okay, I've got to figure out what counter I have to go to. Like, for instance, if you've got a bunch of people standing by the cashier now because you have a centralized cashier, you know, are they going to be impeding the, where that arrow areas, I guess, on the diagram?
That's actually about twenty feet in depth, so there's plenty of room, plus there's also two cashier locations.
What about seating and things like that for that area?
See the dotted boxes up in the...
In the center there?
Yeah, those are all seating benches, things like that, which can also be increased through...
And Rick, you might also want to talk about how the outdoor space works with that as well.
Yeah, the really kind of neat thing is we do have a covered outdoor space directly outside there, so if you don't even want to wait inside, you can still wait out in the garden space, which is really nice. And when you do see the actual facade of that, that side of the building, which we'll probably bring in next time, it's really obvious what the doors are and where you need to go. So I think that all's going to, the architecture actually starts to enhance the function at that point.
You know, as a builder for a long time, I've used a lot of one-stop shops. I always thought, from a service standpoint, it would be a tremendous idea. I don't know how cost-effective it is from a staff standpoint, but I always thought it would be a great idea if you had a service representative, someone right here in this area at large to answer, direct, and help people who came into the one-stop shop. I always thought that would be a heck of an idea. Now, nobody does it, but it's sort of like a service rep. And when you come into the city one-stop shop, bingo, there's somebody there to serve you and help you and direct you.
Kind of like at the DMV?
Yeah, well, sort of like the DMV, but hopefully a little more efficient.
Actually, you'd be surprised. I was shocked. I got help there in five minutes at the DMV the other day. It was quite amazing.
Any other comment on, initial comment on layout? Mr. Webb?
I guess one of the things that I know this happens a lot is that the community comes in and meets with staff to discuss things, so that, could you pull up the option and show us where some of the spaces are set aside for meetings with the outside public as well as internal meetings?
Absolutely.
If you look on the first level, actually, we're more than doubling the amount of conferencing space that you currently have in city hall. What we've done is we've really tried to concentrate a lot of that around public use. So what we've got here is our closed-session room is actually accessible directly from the lobby space, so that can be used for public events directly off the lobby. When you do come into the one-stop shop, you come right through here, there's a conference room here that can be accessed for you, so you can deal with the public directly off there without having them have to come through the office space. In addition, there's another one directly behind that, so they come right in here and directly in without having to go through the space itself. The community room, actually, in this scenario, you see it set up as a meeting space, which happens directly off the lobby space.
It could also function as a classroom.
Rick, it looked like there was some meeting space, though, in the upper right-hand side there.
Yeah, oh, I was going to get to the larger plan, but...
Oh.
There we go. If you look at the whole plan, the space that Mr. Blue, I was just talking about, is right here, and I think we're actually looking at reconfiguring that so it actually gets closer to the one-stop shop. Then all throughout the plan, there are different conferencing areas. There's another one here, another one here. I'm trying to think where else on this plan. And when you get upstairs, there's a whole range of additional conferencing spaces. But like I said, it's more than doubling the amount that you've got currently. And the thing that's really important is there are various sizes, too. There's smaller ones, there's larger ones, there's a lot of variety within those spaces, a lot of flexibility.
All right. Another question about that community room is in the lower corner there, but really, the community's going to be parking in the garage to get to it, aren't they? They're not walking there.
That's the good part, though, because then they come through the lobby gallery space, which we're seeing as being very public space.
What about like in the evening when we want to have evening community? Is the lobby going to be open now?
Yeah, this whole thing could be shut down so that you can have after-hours use because you'll need to have access to the restrooms and things like that. So the whole lobby area, these doors here will be locked down, and upstairs, it pretty much just goes to another lobby space that also can be locked down. So you could have public events throughout that whole lobby space, connecting the central garden to the events plaza, connecting both the community room and the council chambers.
Why didn't you orient the community room to the back, though, so they could just come off?
We did that. Now, that was, that came up in, I think, our very first building committee meeting. The whole reasoning behind that is, because the council chamber is really sort of a closed box, a black box. We talked about having windows in the council chambers, and no one really seemed to want to have that, whereas the community room is all about glass and light. So the idea is that we put the community room on that outside corner, so you have that animation of the corner, you could see activity, you could see people in there. Whereas the council chambers, being a much more solid element, we brought that back to that, the rear corner here, because all of these walls are actually solid. They seem to function a lot better than what, plus you had more people come into the council chambers for a single event, so we let that be closer to the parking structure. In addition, the, putting the events plaza on the front really made us want to have that community room directly adjacent to that so that you can have events that can function both internally and externally.
I just don't see at night, I mean, you're going to have to have a lot more of the building open now just to access the community room unless they're going to walk around to those entrances in the front.
You can enter off the front as well. You can enter directly off Newport Boulevard. The lobby space was going to have to be open anyway just to access those restrooms. We didn't want to have to create a whole separate set of restrooms just for the community room. So by creating equal access from the community room as well as the council chambers, it actually reduces your restroom requirement. Plus, the whole idea, too, that we can have shared uses between the community room and the council chambers. We could actually use the community room for overflow. There'd be a screen element in here so that if crowds get too big in the council chambers, you can actually have sound and audio and video piped into the community room.
Jim? Any other comment on layout? Okay, maybe we can go to what it looks like from the outside. That would be the next step. Does Selig want to weigh in on that? I don't know if I dare. Well, it's a clean sheet of paper. This is your, this is everybody's first look. Well, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on because all the eleva, all these drawings are like nighttime views, so there's a lot of dramatic lighting and, you know, it's really hard for me to pick out what's going on. But I guess kind of my initial reaction is if you like cannery lofts, you're going to love this one. It looks, it looks very industrial to me in the drawings that we're seeing here, so... And looking at these nighttime elevations is, it's really, you know, it's kind of hard to pick up what's going on. So I'm, I'm not overwhelmed by it all.
Yeah, I would agree, it tends to look a little, to me, it looks a little cold, not warm and inviting.
Okay, Councilman Diggle?
I like it. I like the way that you've integrated the sales and certainly why many of us live in this community here for the bay and the ocean, the beaches. So I appreciate that you integrated those elements. I think the one-stop center makes a lot of sense. We really need to serve our public. My concerns are more along the lines of the amount of square footage and any expansion, but I do like the design, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Mr. Webb?
Well, I guess my first comment when I saw this particular layout was it's fine if you like a market, shopping center, boxy office building. And I think that that has been softened fairly significantly with the enhanced design, is what it's being called, which has taken that very square hard and put a little bit of, I guess the architect uses motion, but I'm not sure that's quite what I do. It just doesn't, it's not as hard as the base design, so that as far as I'm concerned, I think that we definitely need to consider some of the enhancements that have been suggested to give us something more than a, an office industrial complex tilt-up design.
I think, too, when you talk about it being cold or like cannery lofts, things like that, it is a building that is contemporary in nature, like Roger talked about earlier. Going through all the different themes, and that was one of the very early studies we did, you know, should this building be Mediterranean? Should it be, you know, any one of a number of themes that exist in Newport Beach? We went back and really studied the roots of architecture in Newport Beach and found the significant buildings really were the ones that were more contemporary in nature that have really stood the test of time. The original Pereira buildings, the original Schindler House, very contemporary, very sort of hard-edged structures that have really kind of stood the test of time and are still considered very important buildings. And that was really the direction that we saw as being more appropriate for a city hall structure, to be more something that was a little more timeless, that, you know, thirty years from now wasn't going to look dated or out of place. So the whole idea of keeping it simple, using the functions to define the aesthetic, using structure to define the aesthetic, using sustainability to define the aesthetic, that's really what shaped the look and the feel of the building.
Well, I think also if we go back into drawing, there was an element here whether, how we were going to build this. We had the soils looked at for liquefaction because we're here near the bay. What, how could we do it? And the net result of all this is it's tilt-up, it's concrete tilt-up construction, I don't think that's been mentioned here, and that by itself will limit, it saves money, but that will limit some design features versus steel clad and on and on and on. We chose that, as I understand, to save money. And the design, the internal function of building it square to, you know, to make efficient space inside also limits, along with the site constraints. But anyhow, it's going, the idea is that this would be a tilt-up building, concrete tilt-up, and based upon the thickness of a concrete panel, and on and on. A lot of those things fold into what this has to look like from the outside.
And in addition, in the enhanced version, there is areas that will have stone cladding, things like that, which will help to kind of warm up the palette. One of the reasons why we do night shots for early renderings like this is because color and things like that are so subjective. So we like to kind of take that off the table for now because that's something we really need to work on closely with you as the users to determine what those will be. So we try to kind of take that out of the equation at this point, and the night renderings help us to do that.
The other thing is that the material selection is very low maintenance over a long time, and that's something you have to consider in an ocean climate. So we're sort of, you know, slaves to many and masters of none. We're trying to meet the function, we're trying to meet the budget, we're trying to meet maintenance, we're trying to meet operating costs, we're trying to meet lead certification. And I guess there's a lot of different ways you could interpret that. This is the way that the LPA interpreted it. It would be very difficult to do a building like this in a Tuscan style, for example, okay? Or in a French Normandy style. So when you start knocking off the styles, okay, you end up with very few options as far as an aesthetic. And the aesthetic is generally contemporary, and contemporary doesn't mean modern. Contemporary means of the times. So it's always of the times. So circumstantially, that plus the material selection plus the structural considerations plus the soils considerations, the base option or the enhanced option, okay, are options that sort of meet all the criteria, just depending on what your criteria is as an individual.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
One of the concerns that I had is when I heard it was concrete tilt-up is I could envision a gray, concrete-formed surface, and that scares me a little bit. And somebody mentioned, well, we'll paint it to come up with the colors that we need to have. And that concerns me even more because if you have a painted concrete service with our paint qualities that we have today, that means that we have a constant problem of every three, four, or five years painting walls. And I don't think that that's going to be very functional because we always tend to delay our maintenance for a little bit longer than it should. And so that I feel that we really need to look at surface textures, even if we do have the hard gray concrete, and even consider some colored concretes to give us some difference from plain concrete. Might even consider sandblasting to give us additional textures. I know the leading wall, you've mentioned that you got the rib... I know the leading wall, you've mentioned that you got the, the ribbed concrete, which is the beginning of coming up with something. But I really think that we'd be, have, we have to look at something that is, as I think has been said earlier, that, that is going to be as low maintenance as possible, that's still going to be looking attractive. It may cost us a little bit more to get the surface or the texture that we want initially, but at least it will look good and last much longer than if we look at painted surfaces.
Thank you. Any other input on, yes, what's your, Nichols?
I, I just wondered what your conclusion was with regard to the soils. I mean, um...
Absolutely.
Come on, you can do it.
I can do it personally, I don't need that thing. We have Deana Gartland here. She's from Leighton Associates. She will give you a two-minute, two-minute or less synopsis of the subsurface soils conditions, okay? And all the borings are done, the report's signed, sealed, and delivered. It's all complete. We have all the concurrence, the structural engineer, their input. They review the soils reports before they're finalized for compatibility with structural systems. That's all done. Deana will give you two minutes or less.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members again. I'm Deana Gartland with Leighton Consulting. We found that the site was better than we expected, with a very low liquefaction potential, which means that it will respond well in an earthquake situation. We found groundwater five to seven feet. The top surface is soft materials, and under the water table is very hard material. So it's a great surface to work on. We're looking at doing a foundation of either geopiers, which is a system where you go down just below the water table, use rocks and other kinds of compacted aggregate, or short piles. That's...
So basically, the short piles would be into that rock structure, though?
Yeah, what we would do is, we would go through the water tables, we'd do driven piles that would go through the water table, through the soft. There's about 10 feet of soft material. We'd go down on short piles, probably 30 to 35 feet.
So you have a pretty ideal situation, I guess, don't you?
It's actually, it's not...
For stability.
We're not building in the desert, because there's a high groundwater table. So that's a challenge that we deal with. But for this area, for Orange County, and particularly for an area that's so close to the beach, it's a, it's a pretty ideal condition.
But I mean, you'll, you'll basically have pilings that are into the rock structure and tied to that pretty significantly.
We don't, we don't actually go down to bedrock, but that is correct. The, the material below the surface here is very highly compressed. It's very strong material. So we'd build a foundation system that had the correct resistance level from the pile to, to the soil, and that would spread out the weight of the building. And we work with the structural engineer on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Ridgeway?
I'd just make a comment, Roger, since I'm on the building committee. I think we're looking at geopiers with an aggregate rock, because we have so much water movement. And actually, as Roger said, no, you're going to change that to a short pier? Or... If it was good enough for the Romans, I thought it was good enough for us.
Well, actually, the Romans did come up with that. If you know, all the Roman temples and structures built along the Adriatic and Mediterranean are all built on, on very difficult soil. And what a stone column is, or a geopier, is, as she said, it's, you put a hollow tube in the ground, you fill it full of rock, you compact the rock, the rock bears on, on the bearing soil, you extract the form, and the water can move through the rocks. So it doesn't have any effect on the, on the column itself, and yet, it gives you an extraordinary bearing surface for the building. It's pretty common in this area. It's not, this isn't a pioneering effort. This isn't even a settler. This is sort of a third-generation solution. My bet is, we'll go to that solution, okay? The bottom line is, my budget addresses it either way. They're fairly comparable systems. The question is, we have to look at it, and until we have a sort of a floor plan that everybody says, okay, and we have an idea what it's going to, least direction which is going to look aesthetically, it's difficult to final any kind of structural solution, which in turn would be the most effective one, both from a structural standpoint and from a cost standpoint, that would tailor to the actual design. But the two solutions, the two options are geopier, short pile.
What was the second one, I'm sorry?
Short pile.
Short pile. You know, a long, a long pile, 65, 70 feet. These are 30, 35-foot piles, they're called short piles.
So this would, four stories or something like that, for your, your parking structure is, would work very well on this kind of thing. But you're not talking about creating a solid concrete pier. You're, you're really more of an aggregate, broken aggregate, that's sufficiently well, so that you can get your loading on in.
The heavier the structure, the taller the structure, which translates to a heavier structure, the more piles you would use. So for a lighter and a shorter structure, you'd simply spread the piles out, because you wouldn't need the resistance on them.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah. I am on the building committee, so I'm a little bit close to this project. I just, I know we're going to open it up to the public. We're looking for constructive comments tonight. But I think you can see from the work of the committee and the people in this room, that they've done, really, I think, a yeoman's job on presenting, one, a building that is very efficient. And by efficient, there's no wasted space in this building, as you look at the floor plan. It moves very well, there's very good people movement. I know staff is still playing around with a little bit of floor plans. Mr. Webb made a comment, and I do agree with it. I like some of the softening aspects of the second rendition of the, the add-ons, the 45 feet from Finley. I think there are some other things. We're looking for a direction for Griffin Structures and the, and the team that's here tonight, and for the committee that is, we're having meetings every two weeks, and actually, sometimes every week. So it is a working committee, and we are moving fairly rapidly, because we have to if we're going to meet some hurdles and finance rates and other things. But I know John's going to open it to the public. I think, again, I'm too close to it, but I think it's a very good project for the city of Newport Beach, and one that the citizens would be proud of, and certainly one that we need.
Can you have the concluding comments from council before we open it up? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Please come on up and speak on this topic. Thanks.
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. First off, I'd like to remind the city council that Newport Beach is classified as a tree city, so I think that there should be an insistence that the ficus trees remain, or we're going to have a lady, oh, well, have somebody come up here singing more songs, and a lady probably chaining herself to the trees, as well as potential legal garbage, however that goes. Another thing about plants, you have a two-story structure and a four-story structure, one being the city hall and the other being a parking structure. Well, between two buildings at that height, plants aren't going to grow very well, so I can understand why the idea of a statue garden is coming into mind. I'm not sure exactly if you need it that large. I think that more people need to be able to have access to those rooms, as well as sitting, where you're talking about the lobby area and the workroom, however you want to call it. Picture's not up there. The other thing that I'm, I'm kind of curious about is if we're trying to be efficient nowadays, because the cost of living is going up left and right, why solar panels haven't been thought of. There's a lot of roof space on top of this two-story structure, and that would probably cut down the cost of maintaining the city hall down the road. So I think that maybe that should be considered. The other is, if there's a overflow for the community's room, then there needs to be more direct access, because people, even, even in a community room, have a right to come up and speak at this podium. So if they're in the other room, listening on a screen, and they would like to make a comment, they need to be able to have the time to come up and speak. So I think there needs to be more direct access from that room. Another is, as I understand it, by the design, there's one main access, entrance from the lobby, and the one on the outside is, I'm assuming, it wasn't labeled as such, is an emergency exit. Right now, we have an emergency exit behind me to the right, and then we have two entrances, exits. That's adequate for everybody in this room to get out of here rather quickly. Under the design that I see, I don't see how that can be, how people can get out of here real quickly, because there's a jog in the corner. If we have a person in a wheelchair, and they're in the back, the entrance from the lobby, they're going to have a rough time getting through, and I think we're going to be tripping over. I hate to have somebody trampled, just because they need to get out of here real quickly. As for the parking structure, the, if it gets closer to the building, I don't know if the people that have their offices next to the house, next to the, the two-story structure from city hall would like it. However, I think that the front of the building should have the ficus, because, as noted, it's the tree city. So that may be your focal point as for the city halls, to, to highlight those ficus trees. Thank you.
Mr. Hildreth? I'm sure there must be more public comment. Please come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. I came here tonight because I have wanted, as you probably, some of you have already heard, wanted this to be as green a building as possible. And I have to say, I'm pretty disappointed that no one has talked about the solar panels. We have a flat roof, we have a, I don't know what, there's a roof on the garage, but it seems like it would be the right thing to do, to plan for structurally, and plan to build this new building with solar panels. It's, it, the photovoltaic cells, I understand, can actually be, I'm not sure, but I've read this happened in San Diego, embedded into the roof, and their maintenance is less, and it helps with, that's the right word on that one, I can't remember, but, okay. I just, that's my main push for coming tonight. But I also want to talk to you about this LEED certification. Not sure you're aware, that there are four levels of LEED certification. There's the basic one, there's silver, there's gold, there's platinum. And I went to the internet this afternoon to look up the differences. Mr. Selig is looking very, like, he knows all these already, so he'll probably be able to help you with that. But it seems to me that, from what I can understand, it's pretty complicated, but from what I can understand, there are various ways that you get credits when you're doing a building for LEED certification. And the sum of the credits, they, they have five different categories: indoor environmental quality, sustainable sites, materials and resources, energy and atmosphere, and water efficiency. I think as you count your credits, and as you're looking for LEED certification, I think you ought to prioritize the things that you think are the most important. To me, it would be energy efficiency, which is where I am bringing in the solar panel idea, and, and water efficiency or conservation, actually. I am not certain what they mean by sustainable sites, but I don't think that really affects us greatly here. From what little I could read, it has something to do with other areas. But your consultants will know the answers to those things. And materials and resources, probably all those things are important, but I really think you ought to focus on the two that I mentioned, the energy efficiency and the water conservation. The governor of California, Schwarzenegger, signed an executive order in December of 2004, saying that the state is required to try to, well, I'll tell you what I, I'll read you what I got from a woman by the name of Charlene Langlund, with the Sharp Solar System. And that, she happened to be at a function that I was at, and she was explaining to me that the governor had signed an executive order, that the state is to commit to aggressive action to reduce state building electricity usage by retrofitting, building, and operating the most energy and resource-efficient buildings by taking all cost-effective measures, and that may be the hang-up right there, described in the Green Building Action Plan for facilities owned, funded, or leased by the state, and to encourage cities, counties, and schools to do the same. That was his, his executive order. What she added personally to me, she said, also, please let the city council know that the state of California pays $4.50 per watt toward the cost of a system, and I think she's referring just to the solar cell system, that is 30 kilowatts or greater, and I would assume that we would produce, with our size building that we have, something that would be more than 30 kilowatts. With initial costs below $7 per watt, even lower on new construction, it would make the system very affordable. The payback could be realized pretty quickly. One of the things I would like to ask you to do, to ask your consultants, is to obtain information on the cost of solar panels for this, this building. Maybe you already have that information, maybe they have it tonight. And I also think it's important to ask your consultants how they are planning to obtain the credits for the LEED certification. So they aren't in some minor area, that they're more in a more major concern. As I say, I think the energy and the water is the most, are the most important ones. And if you are not able to go for the solar panels at the beginning, which I certainly hope you are, and would be willing to consider that, I have no idea how much it would cost, I would hope that you at least structure your building so that you could do it in the future, so you could build it that way. So, the other comment I was going to make is that, there was a lot of information that came out tonight. It was new to me, and although I came here to push for the solar panels, and that was my main reason for coming, there are other comments I would like to make, and I'm wondering if, as you do your website, or whatever you're working with, is that you could make it so that there could be feedback from the public, without having to come to a meeting? I don't know if that's possible. I mean, for instance...
What we'll do, we'll set up a separate website like we did before. In fact, we could probably use the same one, because it dealt with the same issue, it still exists, and we will deal with. City Clerk, you know what that is? Do you remember what it was?
NB City Hall, at yahoo dot com.
Yeah, NB City Hall, NB like Newport Beach, City Hall like a city hall, all one word, at yahoo dot com. I mean, that's what we used before, four or five months ago, that is still valid.
And there will, and there will be some opportunity for the public to maybe email and respond to that?
No, no, that's the email, and you can weigh in. If you want to send us all your comments, that'll be dedicated to this, to this issue.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
And so it gives, gives folks at home a way to weigh in without being here, which is exactly what you've asked for.
And the presentation will be on the city's website, is that right, I understood earlier?
Yes, and you have streaming videos, I mean, and so you can actually see this meeting again at 3:00 in the morning by going on the city's site. Is that true, City Clerk?
3:00 in the morning?
Correct.
Well, no, anybody, I mean...
Or next Monday.
Well, no, you're not tied to a TV.
Well, I don't think...
Or next year.
Yeah, your next meeting where you're going to be discussing, and I'm going to be on vacation, I won't be here, but I just, I just, the, off the top of my head comments, where I, I actually thought, I hate to say this out loud, but I had to thought those sails on the building were kind of odd. I had a hard time connecting with those personally, I don't know. And I'm also concerned that that, one of the enhancements that it showed, where the sloping of the building would come up, sort of like a boat, would be in the wrong direction if you were going to do solar panels. It seems to me solar panels should be, be able to angle toward the south, I think, but I'm not certain about that. There's a lot of things I don't know about solar panels, but I'm sure somebody does. And if, and if your current consultants are not familiar with it, I'm sure that the company that does the most sale of those photovoltaic cells could help you with that, just by giving them a call. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just make a commitment to Nancy, that I will ask the consultants to look at solar panels, but I just want to make a comment. I've had my house reviewed for solar panels, I've been on my roof with the people. The payback is about 25 years. It's very expensive. I will say, the LEED certification, Nancy, which we drove as a committee, came because of you, and you now see that we have open windows and fluorescent lights and cross-ventilation. The cost of solar is very expensive. So we have, we are... The cost of solar is very expensive, so we have, we are constrained by a budget, I just want to let you know that. I will have them do research and we'll get back to you, but I just want to let you know, the payback is a very long time and it's very expensive and it's way beyond our budget. That much I'm sure, way beyond.
Well, well, listen, I mean, the option's been given, the consultants come back with a number, we've got a lot of enhancements that'll be added as an enhancement. Right, Mr. Torrey?
We'll look at it.
No, 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 I mean, that's, you've given, you've been given this as an instruction, you can just do that and come back with it. Okay. Mr. Ridgeway, anymore?
No, I just wanted to let Nancy know that we've at least requested, we're still in public comments.
Okay, we've had two public comments on a multimillion-dollar project. Are there more?
Good evening, my name is John Loper, I represent the Fritz Duda Company and we are, the Fritz Duda Company is the manager of the property next door, the Via Lido Shopping Center, next-door neighbor. And we've been in front of council before to talk about the land trade. And I want to say, we are still very excited about this new City Hall. I use City Hall to go get permits. I think the design of your one-stop-shop inside is going to be a great enhancement, having a place to sit down, having a place to roll out drawings, not having to stand outside waiting for your number to be called is going to be wonderful. I use a lot of one-stop shops, this looks like a great design. I'm not an expert at designing one-stop shops, but I wanted to mention that, that it's going to make a lot of people's lives a lot easier to get everything in one place. I had not seen the internal design until tonight, and we do think that this is a good improvement from what we saw several months ago in the very conceptual drawings. We're especially excited about the public outdoor spaces. I think the improvements to have the plaza area, the sculpture garden, or whatever you want to call it, is going to be a great activity space. There's not a lot of places in the city that you can hold outdoor events. We host a lot of charity events at the Lido Theater and it would be nice to have a public outdoor forum for people to walk to after we have a film festival event, or an exchange club event, or a charity fundraiser at the theater to go and have a reception. And I think a lot of use will be done in the expansion of the area between the parking garage and City Hall is a great addition. I do want to mention one thing, and we do have a concern, and we brought this up to staff just very recently because we just saw the exterior, the site plan, and we share an entrance currently off of Finley Avenue off of Newport Boulevard, that's the main entrance to the shopping center. And with the plan that we saw tonight, there's a considerable amount of things going on off of Finley Avenue. And I don't know if you could put the site plan up real quick, that would be very helpful. But we have a concern about the way the service area is designed and we wanted to bring it up because it is a public forum and bring it up. We've made some comments very quickly to staff, which they probably haven't even had time to look at about it. But we have really two issues with the service area, which is on the north side, which is right at the Finley entrance, which is where the left turn signal comes in. Currently, we share our access with the City Hall parking lot in this area. And our two concerns revolve around the traffic area, the traffic and the visual impacts. And I think the traffic impact, some of the walls are missing from this particular, but the way it's designed, the trucks are going to come in, back in and back into the service area, but when they also come out, they're going to have to come out and make a left turn to go out onto Finley to get out to Newport Boulevard. And when they're doing that, the trash trucks, the delivery vans, the Office Depot, whatever, they're going to be making a left turn across an incoming lane of traffic that has a left turn signal, so there's a whole bunch of people coming in all at once, and then cross our two outgoing lanes of traffic. We're concerned about how that works and quite frankly, think it could be a problem because we have people coming in and out of the shopping center and trucks trying to make a left turn across that. It's a technical issue, I'm sure it's something that can be worked on and a further refinement, but it is an issue we have with the site plan and it's a safety issue. Second issue is regarding the visual impacts of the loading area and the service area, both from Newport Boulevard, which I think some of the enhancements are trying to help with. There's a big trash enclosure shown on one of the site plans up on that thing, which is one of the first things you'll see when you drive in off of Finley. But we also look at the service area from the Lido Theater and from the Starbucks and the shopping center. We want to make sure that that is appropriate first impression of City Hall that you get from all the people coming in and out of the shopping center and driving down Newport Boulevard. So we hope that these issues can be addressed. We've made some suggestions to staff and to the, hopefully we'll go to the planning consultants, to see if there's a way we can solve that. We've worked on a land trade, we're still very much in support of trading land to help the design of the center. We want to be a good neighbor, but we do, we've worked hard actually to remove our service and truck access that goes through the alley between the fire station and the current City Hall, to remove that from the City Hall properties so that our trucks coming into our center don't use the alley, so we keep them all on-site. And we would just hope that the city could work on a solution that would keep the trucks and the access to City Hall from causing potential problems on the Finley access, which is the main entrance to our shopping center.
Okay, well, let me make a suggestion for you to think about, and as if you look at the site plan, if you go horizontally to the right, are you potentially offering us a different access point from your property to another point in the building so that the Finley Balboa Boulevard corner would be more pristine? We have to service this building some point. Is that something that may be in the works that, since it's a common drive that you will use, that you would offer us access, so we get access to the rear of our building in a different spot?
We'd be willing to look at other access points, we...
But it would have to be with your cooperation. We have a public street we're getting access from now, it would have to be some easement right or something that you might offer us.
We could look at that. We've made a proposal to look at possibly accessing a service area through the parking structure.
Yes, okay.
And our concern is, is that's a very prominent corner, it's the first corner you see when you drive down Newport Boulevard. That's going to be the first impression to 98% of the people driving to City Hall. And having that corner be a prestigious corner, I think is a good thing, and having it be a place that the Office Depot truck is parked may not be the most optimal look.
No, that's been raised, raised a number of times here, but it may also entail cooperation from the adjacent landowner, which is on your side, to give us some other options to look at. Mr. Webb, do you have any comment on that?
I had one question. You mentioned you are changing your deliveries. Your delivery trucks are now going to have to come in off of Finley, aren't they?
The way we have designed on our temporary design, I mean, our current version, because we're still, as we get information about how the City Hall is going to lay out, then we have to go work on designing ours, and we're doing this all at our cost. Our trucks will come in off of Finley, go straight through to the back loading area and exit on Via Porto. And that way, there's no turning movement in the Finley entrance, so that it's a straight shot, we get them in and out. We're not coming with a cross-turn, a perpendicular across the main entrance, and they're only coming in that way. And that was the only way we could get the trucks in and maneuver them to get them out. And then we're doing our loading on the back, so it's not visible from Newport Boulevard, which is where our current loading is.
Right.
But we'll be doing a new exit off of Via Porto to get the trucks out and back out on 32nd Street.
Mr. Mayor, if I could offer a couple of comments. One is, I put in a call and talked with John today and offered to meet with he and Mr. Duda on Thursday with the architect so that we could review that concern. My other comment is that right now you have two ingresses and egresses off of that parking lot. Now you have a tremendous amount of traffic that's mixed with traffic coming and going from the shopping center. The way we envision this, there'd be about 1% of the traffic that is there now, just with the deliveries, because all of the public and employee parking is going to be in the parking garage. So as far as a safety concern, you know, we'd probably be removing about 99% of city-related traffic on Finley.
No, but I'm hearing another concern is that that is really the front door of this building, that people accessing it, most of them will come down Balboa Boulevard and they're going to see, you can hide it with landscaping, basically a loading facility that, but from a conceptual standpoint, if you look at that site plan, it is there. And that was the point, we could maybe move it somewhere else, and that's what we're going to explore.
And we'll come back next meeting and talk about what the aesthetic treatment of that...
Good, that's fine, that's great. Thank you. Public comments still open? Expected four more than three. And that's all we're going to get, okay? Last time, okay, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to staff.
Mr. Mayor, what we need from you is, I think, looking at the upgrades as they've been termed and giving direction to the consultant as to whether any or all should be incorporated in the schematics.
Well, I mean, is that what you really want from us? Because this is a lot to swallow. Some of these councilmen have just seen this for the first time tonight, and they're going to be making multimillion-dollar decisions on enhancements to lead, to lead the consultants in that direction?
Well...
Why would we have to do this tonight and not let them proceed along? Is there a connection?
If council feels comfortable in doing this, we'd prefer doing it tonight because next week, the consultant is going to present the total cost of the overall project and the add-ins are going to impact that number.
Well, I'm just not prepared to say, $5 million, $5.5 million worth of add-ons, which ones I want and which ones we don't, but I'm one, I'd like counsel input on that topic. Mr. Selig?
I feel the same way. I, this is the first time I've seen any of this, and I'd hope that someone would provide me with some more detailed drawings and stuff that I could take a look at because it's kind of hard to be evaluating this stuff just looking at it up on the screen. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, I would actually echo that. I think that, I am, again, close to it, I know what the add-ons are, and while I don't agree with all of them, I feel more comfortable just continuing as a committee and as chairman of the committee, I would ask other councilmen to call me with your comments so I can give direction during, during the interim. But it's really difficult. I mean, I think to sit here and kind of pick and choose is really difficult. I think, leave it to the, you know, again, I am asking the other council members certainly to communicate to me if you have strong feelings on what you don't want, but we're trying to stay within a budget, but at the same time, make a building or a project that is acceptable to the citizens at large and represents Newport Beach and the larger community.
If you can tell staff and the consultants how to build a comfort level to where you could make a decision, yea or nay, I mean, we're certainly very open to that.
Well, I think part of the reason we wanted to have multiple meetings is to allow us to digest this, especially if you don't, if you need like a building model to look at, that would be helpful, something like a little model. I mean, to look at this thing on a, on a flat screen and make a $5.5 million decision, I'm just not prepared to do it. It would just give us another feel. Also, I think it's time to reflect on this. I mean, for Mr. Selig, who's seen this tonight for the first time, I mean, you wouldn't do this with your own house, I don't think, so...
The committee talked about bringing a model, but the model is so small, it's maybe two, two feet long, that it would be very difficult to make a decision just based upon a small model.
Again, I think just let the, the building committee move forward, you know, and I just, you know, I'm handed a note, I'll just read it out loud. Other councilmen cannot talk to me as the chairman and I maintain those, am I in violation of Brown Act?
I think that would create a Brown Act problem.
Okay.
Well, they can post it on our website, can't they? Isn't that, isn't that what it's for? And he can read it from the website, right?
Actually, that's intended for the public. I think...
Well, he's public too.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to move this thing along because we're moving very rapidly. I think, I do know a few of us in the building committee have some strong opinions about the add-ons, that we want them, you know, as opposed to not wanting them. I think they become important. I think the newest information that we had tonight that we're going to have to resolve fairly rapidly is this Finley Avenue loading and unloading, and I think that is a challenge not insurmountable, but I think it needs to be dealt with and...
And Mr. Mayor, if I could offer one more suggestion in between now and the next meeting, is that the architect and myself will meet with groups of two council people because we're talking about four who are not on the building committee, and at least give them the opportunity for more in-depth education as to what those options are.
Well, and I think the council should weigh in also on the scheduling of this. I mean, this is a 40 to 45 million dollar cost project. I mean, to design this thing in three meetings, to have an ultimate input, I think is moving pretty fast. I know what the schedule is, I know what rising interest rates mean, they mean a lot to me personally, and they'll mean to us if we go out in the bond market to borrow money, but we have a bigger obligation to our residents to do this thing right and to do it in a reasonable way. And I think there's only so much that we can digest, especially for those of us who are not in the business of building things like this, and also input from our residents. I mean, to have three public comments to a project of this size, I think is pretty shallow. I don't know, shallow to our residents, but I thought we'd get many more. I'd like other input on the, on the, on the council on the subject.
Mr. Mayor, would it be, maybe, could some of the other council members perhaps offer some comments to the building committee tonight about things that they either like? I know without, it's going to be hard for you to say, I really want that or really don't want that. Are there things that we haven't considered that should be considered in the opinion of some of the other council members?
Well, first off, it would be helpful to, you know, if we don't have it up here, to have a, get copies of what you've given, provided. I mean, that would be very helpful to be able to ponder this rather than to, I mean, I mean, hard copy.
What plans and elevation?
No, that'd be good. I mean, that'd be a start. Mr. Selig?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we just need some, you know, detailed information to look at. Quite frankly, and I hate to say this, but we're being asked to make, you know, suggested in a way that we make this decision based on less information that the planning commission gets on a set of plans for a use permit. I mean, come on.
Well, that's why you delegated this to a sterling building committee.
I understand that and I trust you implicitly, I'd like to see it for myself.
Okay.
And what a sterling committee that, what a sterling committee that is, I find. I have a lot of faith in the building committee, it's their profession, they do this all day and appreciate their desire to get into the tiniest of details on this project. So I am okay with them continuing forward. I can give you some feedback. Based on some of my impressions this evening, I thought the functionality at Finley does need to be worked out in conjunction with a neighboring property. I think that the aesthetic enhancements are positive in terms of softening up the design. And again, I would reiterate, making sure that the square footage is really in sync with what we believe is our future community needs. So those would be my comments.
Any other initial comments? Okay, staff, you have enough direction from us?
Yes, we do. We'll come back next week and do some of the same things and incorporate the fire station and parking lot discussion.
All right, let me...
Is that going to be next week or two weeks? Excuse me, two weeks.
And in addition to the consultants have, you've had a pretty good dose of, from us as well, I hope you, we've given you input as well, you know, a general feeling from where we're going with this. Any other comment on this? Okay, we'll move off this item.
Item number 13, Corona Del Mar State Beach Improvements Award of Contract.
Let me, city manager, let me pose a question here. It's 10:05, we've, we've run pretty hard. Is the, is it a desire of the council to take a five-minute recess before we dive into this next item or to just proceed? Take a break? We'll take a break, we're going to, we'll come back in five minutes. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, we'll come back to order. City Clerk?
The next item is item thirteen, Corona Del Mar State Beach Improvements Award of Contract.
City Manager, who's going to give the staff report?
Uh, it looks like I will give the staff report, and I will basically be reading from the script that was prepared by Dave Kiff, who was going to give the staff report, and he had, he had something else that he had to attend to, so I'm going to do the best that I can. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, tonight we're bringing to you what could be the final step towards constructing the Corona Del Mar Beach Project. Steve, that's not-
That's not-
Wrong one. And this is, this project has been in the works about five years since we were first talking about it. What we're going to cover tonight is the use of the beach today, including revenues and expenditures. We'll show some photos of the current facilities, and even some in which we've recently taken to show some of the damage done to some of the buildings. We'll also cover the proposed project, its budget, and why the costs are at the level they are, and we'll wrap up with a construction timeline and the next steps. And we'll tell the people at home how to find out more information about this project. The city operates Corona Del Mar State Beach on behalf of the State Parks Department via an operating agreement that took effect in nineteen ninety-nine. The agreement tells us, among other things, to maintain and operate this facility to standards, just as we would any other city park or beach facility. Here's what the location looked like in our two thousand and one aerial. There are two sets of restrooms, two sets of concession facilities, about three hundred parking spaces, a parking booth at the entrance to the parking spaces, and lots with a lot of friendly, access to a lot of beach. Corona Del Mar State Beach gets about eight hundred and sixty-two thousand users per year, about a hundred and twelve thousand cars, lots of walkers, because a number of cars will park in the residential area surrounding the beach. About eleven to twelve hundred cars go in and out of the lot on an average busy summer weekend. And this is the site of the city's Tidepool Education Program, which can see more than three thousand kids all in buses in the months of April and May. It's also home to Recreation Services volleyball program and contract classes for summer athletic camps. The lifeguards report that with all of these beachgoers, they make the kinds of contacts listed there on the screen, and all via the small wooden towers. Revenue from the state beach is almost a million dollars a year, including eight hundred and seventy-five thousand from parking and nine hundred, excuse me, ninety thousand from the concessions. The concessionaire, Gordon Kilmer, is on a month-to-month holdover. We anticipate going out for a full RFP to concession services per our council policies once this project is completed. Expenses include two hundred and fifty-five thousand in direct maintenance costs from both general services and public works, and many of these are done by contract, and about eight hundred thousand on a per-call basis for fire EMS and police. That's included there, too, and also the staffing for lifeguards and parking lot attendance. If we ever make a profit on our operations, which will never happen, that profit would have to go to the state per the operating agreement. Next, here are some photos taken of the facilities, including some that we have taken down. They were taken down because they were in such a bad state of disrepair that there was potential liability, because concrete could come down on people's heads while they were using the bathrooms, so we just took those facilities down. It was too great a risk. Next, more photos, including the beach walls, showers, and parking areas. Next is the design of the project, which I'll tell you about in a moment. We may refer back to this slide if you have any questions pertaining to the overall components of the project. Next is the definition of the project. The project will add some comfort stations, it will add eighteen more, fourteen more for women. It will add about six hundred and fifty square feet for a lifeguard facility, about a hundred and seventy-seven square feet for Tidepool Ranger program. It will reduce the concession site, since we believe that a more central concession location avoids the need for the two current sites, and the new site will still have over a thousand square feet for concession space. In an attempt to make the facility more neighbor-friendly, this project reduces the overall building areas as shown. And included, too, is an entranceway remodeled to allow for better turnaround area. It will also allow people to drop people off, and also their supplies and materials, especially during times when the lot is full. This is an important ADA accommodation that we don't have right now, and that's a safe place to drop people off with disabilities when the lot is full. Going on, this project redoes the hardscape facilities and almost doubles the landscaped area, since that is a commonly desired beachgoer amenity. It moves and rebuilds the parking kiosk, and includes the requisite design and contingency amounts. Here's a site profile of the lifeguard at Tidepool and concession facilities, so all of these are included in one building. I know I've already heard some discussion from some people that maybe we can cut out a component, such as the lifeguard tower or the concession facility, but just bear in mind that this was designed to reduce the number of buildings that are currently on-site and to consolidate some things together, so this structure includes lifeguard Tidepool and concession facility. Next, this is the site profile of the restroom facility, of which there would be two restroom sites, towards both ends of the beach. Looking at the numbers, staff was very happy with the low bid, and even the next low bid, these were pre-qualified firms that came within five thousand dollars of each other. We believe that they are the best competitive bids that we could get. We did bid this project previously in the, I think we had a single bid, and it came in about two hundred and twenty-five thousand above these bids. They're both solid reputable companies. However, our glee is tempered by the cost of the project. This is a project that will need two point, excuse me, three point two million, a budget amendment to fully construct the project. You can see that we have leveraged this amount with more than a million dollars in non-general fund revenue, including a state grant, FEMA money, and the American Trader revenue. So how did the increase come about? Well, the original estimate in two thousand and three was for two point four six million. We bid the project in two thousand and four, and it came in too high, at about four point five million without contingency. That increase, a little less than two million, is largely explained by the unparalleled increase in construction costs over the past couple of years. Steel, concrete, and labor and fuel hikes have dramatically changed projects like this one, which involve lots of steel and cement. In addition, public sector work is booming now thanks to the bond acts, both local and state, and we haven't gotten bidders, a number of bidders as we would like. A minor increase was the addition of the Inspiration Point Beach Access Trail, which would repair damage from one of this winter's storm, and that is the money that would be coming from FEMA. Here's a brief history on the project. You approved this project in two thousand and three as far as- You approved this project in 2003 as far as going out with working drawings. The failed bid in 2004, we had that one window of opportunity then, since this work would start in September in order to be finished in the April-May timeframe. We still want to meet that if you decide to go forward with awarding a bid tonight. The timing is very important so that we can get the work done prior to the busy season starting up next spring. These bids were opened in July, and we're asking for your thoughts tonight. If you give us the okay to proceed with this project and award the bid, the contractor will get started the day after Labor Day and be done by the spring 2006, in time for the next summer season. So, the issues before you tonight. You have before you a ready-to-go project, but it needs a significant budget amendment of $3 million. We believe that the project and this bid are important enough to warrant using $3 million of the $10 million that we have previously set aside for projects like this. And that money was originally set aside to help us take PERS retirement cost increases. We didn't know how high those rates would go, so basically it was a decision by Dennis and I that of the money in reserves, going into reserves, that we would earmark some of that money for PERS increases, and that was started about four years ago. So, we built up $9 million, and that money was never touched. So, then, this year, we decided to turn that, turn part of that money into the CIP Fund to help with projects that we are now planning, including the Mariners' project, of which there will be a cost overrun for. This would be a one-time expense. We expect the facilities would last us for 40 to 50 years. Some have suggested that we scale the project back, and we could do that, but we'd have to reject this bid and rebid another project, and that would be the third time that we would be going out to bid this project. We'd likely miss the construction window, so we're really talking about waiting another year. And with field cost rising and no slump in steel and concrete prices, who knows what the project would be at this time next year? Some have suggested also maybe cutting out the lifeguard and concession facility, but those facilities had been identified in the state grant, which some money is going to in excess of 400,000 towards this project. If we don't construct those facilities, then we lose that money. Finally, to help fund this project, and if you choose to go forward, I think the Finance Committee met yesterday and reviewed this, and they probably will have some comments to make tonight. It isn't a good situation to come to you and ask for you to dip into reserves of $3 million in order to fund this or any other project. However, we feel like this is a project that is very important to Corona Del Mar. It is one of the faces of Newport Beach that sees almost a million people each year using that beach, so we're coming to the City Council to ask what you would like to do, whether you want to accept the bid, whether you want us to do something else, because timing is of the essence on this project. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Nichols? This is your district.
I've certainly talked to a number of people on this project, and basically, most of the people that live around there and view this on Breakers Drive or on the homes that are right above it, they have no problem with people on the beach. They're not, that's not the concern, but they really are not looking to enhance this as a, to make it such a goody-goody place that it gets overused or something. We have plenty of people on our streets. They're regularly filled. And basically, what I think the people are looking for is to use the beach, to enhance the beach, to get restrooms, and basically get some sand down there so that the volleyball can take place properly. We've lost quite a bit of sand, and that's the areas that they're looking for. And I do not really think that with only three lifeguard stands and the fact that we do not have this manned on a yearly basis, that that certainly warrants that. The lifeguard station we have in Newport Beach has 19 on one side and 17 on the other. I think 36 different towers that they're looking at. This has three. And the other tower in China Cove, if we count that, and the one at Little Corona, they cannot be seen from the beach, from the main beach. So, they, you can reach them by climbing rocks on one side and walking four blocks on the other, but they are not contiguous. You would, the lifeguard tower, except by radio, is no better off than where they are right now at the Coast Guard Station. So, I'm not sure that that's an improvement. And in talking to people that are familiar with the vending and talking to the vendor of, you know, that's been there a long time, when they had their vendor and the lifeguards directly at the same place, they usually ended up with a mess. The lifeguards became more involved with the people, and it wasn't as easy to keep everything straight. So, I'm not sure that we're improving that aspect with this new design, if you will. It's very expensive, and all the extra grass is not, not, we need a wall down there. We need it fixed, and we need sand on the beach, but I'm not sure that this is what the priorities of my people are, to be very frank.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just address one of the comments. We had a Finance Committee meeting yesterday, and I think we were told that the lifeguard tower, both bottom and upper floors, about 675 square feet, so it isn't much of a structure.
It's $890,000, $888,000, though.
But it is built into the concession building. That's why the total cost for that building is so high.
But we're going to tear down the concession buildings that are there now, so I mean, you could just leave them for that matter, but I'm, but what I'm pointing out here is that we're not, we're proposing to go out for a new concessionaire, and we were even talking about having them operate out of a trailer. I mean, that's one of the methods that we were talking about doing it, so I do not, and his concession of only 1,000 square feet doesn't give him any storage or ability to do much. I mean, that's a fairly small facility to handle the people that are down there.
The concessionaires' space is less now than it was, would be with the two existing facilities. But one point I started to make and didn't get to make is that as far as the lifeguard tower is concerned, I mean, the bottom would be mostly storage. And one of the important storage needs is that when somebody gets stung by a stingray, right now, we have them sitting on the dirt with their foot in a bucket of water, and this would allow us to at least have some room for, to treat people adequately and have some warm water, which is very, very important to drawing the poison out of that sting. We don't even have that basic need served as far as somebody that gets stung by a stingray.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Webb? I think that we have discussed these design issues extensively in the planning process for this facility, and this is the design that we came up with after several public hearings, and it, I don't believe, has changed at all as far as the features are concerned. The facilities that are there today are aging, and while, yes, somebody can occupy them, they should be replaced. They've reached their life. Some of the facilities, the restrooms, have had roofs taken off because they were a hazard. For us to continue to ignore the problems that are there and say, "Well, gee, let's leave it like it is," I don't think is prudent. I believe that we need to go forward with a design that has been, well, designed to meet the needs of the beach-going public. And I think that this facility isn't going to draw in more people necessarily because on the weekends it's at capacity. It governs its own use from that standpoint. So, I feel that the contract should be awarded tonight. One of the items that I'm somewhat, I'm always a little bit concerned with is that we just automatically come up with a 10% contingency fee and say, "That's great, let's go ahead and build it." So, my only suggestion might be that we reduce that to 5%, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the recommended action here as is.
Do you have a second on that?
Did you modify the contingency?
Well, yes, we're modifying the contingency to 5%. That means we only need $3 million from our reserves instead of 3.2 million. Now, that just means that Public Works inspectors are going to have to work more diligently to keep the contractor from getting more money, for more change orders.
I'll second their motion, and I'm seconding it with a comment. It's pay me now or pay me later, so I just don't see a choice here. I wish we did.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Selich? Yeah, I have a concern about awarding this contract, and it comes from a little bit different perspectives than Councilman Nichols, but it seems to me that, and I don't, I'm the new kid on the block here, so forgive me if I don't understand all of this completely, but if it was budgeted as a $2.4 million project and we're asking for a $3.2 million budget amendment, it seems like it was only budgeted for a million or a million-two, whatever it comes out to. So, I guess I don't understand that part of it. And then, I guess I question the wisdom of going and taking $3 million, which is 30% of our capital improvement reserve, and spending it on one project like this, which seems to have limited benefits compared to a lot of the needs in the community. We just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago talking about Sunset Ridge and the shortfall and the need over there. I'm sure there's other projects in the city, and I know that the staff is looking at some kind of update to the capital improvement programs, and it just seems to me it really isn't prudent to award this contract without a more broad understanding of what all the city's capital improvement needs are and how we're going to fund them. And even if it costs us a year, while we put this on hold and reevaluate it in light of everything else, I don't see where the, you know, Corona Del Mar Beach can operate for another year like it is. I guess there might be some risk with the State Parks Grant expiring. I'm not sure about that, but I don't know, it just doesn't seem like a prudent move to do right now. Might be other options, just phasing in some of these improvements, and I don't know how much of that's been really looked at, so it's not something I'm real comfortable with.
Okay. Staff, you want to respond to those?
One response I would have is that unfortunately, I think council is faced with the decision you either award the bid or you don't award the bid tonight. You know, unlike City Hall, it is in a situation where you can pick and choose and say, "Well, I don't want the lifeguard tower, I don't want the concession," because that's the way the project was bid. And even though there was some breakout, I mean, this is the bid as it is, and if you would want something done differently, I think the thing you would need to do is award the bid and then direct staff to try and negotiate what differently that you would want. One other comment that I would have regarding the financing of it. When Dennis and I set this money aside, I think the projects that we were looking at are the following, that we would need to add money to because unfortunately, it takes about four years for a city project, from the time it is conceived to the time it is bid and built. And in this day and age, that costs us a lot of money, but we were looking at, you know, some money needing to go into the Mariners' library, the fire station at Santa Ana Heights, although we think that that money, any overages to that project would be reimbursed by the RDA once we acquire that. The Back Bay Science Center to the tune of about 500 to 750,000. I think Mariners' Library, about $1 million. Newport Coast Community Center, we have some obligations there by the agreement, which we will be reviewing at an upcoming City Council meeting, and I think our costs there are about 750 to a million dollars. So, that's what the money over the last couple of years that we were looking at doing. And this construction environment, where the costs were escalating, is using the money to get us through the projects that were either in the planning stages or construction stages. That was just staff's thinking.
And what about, where does this money coming from all of a sudden? I mean, that was one of Mr. Selich's questions.
It would be money that was left over at the end of the year because our revenues were in advance of our expenditures that would have gone into the reserves anyway. These are general fund reserves. We just earmarked them for a specific use, but in order to use them to offset any PERS increases, we would need it, have needed to come back to the City Council, and you would have had to authorize uses of that. So, it is general fund reserve money that was just kind of specifically, paper-wise, earmarked for PERS needs.
I think the third component of that, of that question was, do we have a grasp on all of the capital improvements that are going to be needing, needed to be done in the short term and long term? And is this the number-one priority where you would say, "This needs to be done right now"? Do we have a grasp of all the projects that need to be done, and have we, and if we don't, how can we make this the first priority?
We don't have a grasp. We're in the process of looking at our, and we've talked about this before at a previous council meeting, looking at our, first, our public safety facilities, police, fire stations, and lifeguard towers, and then after that, coming back and looking at all of the other city facilities in terms of just doing a quick analysis by an outside consultant as far as code requirements and deficiencies code-wise, so that we can begin to get our arms around, you know, how old these facilities are, what kind of useful life they have, and coming up with some kind of financing mechanism in order to do them. Now, the problem with this is that if we decided today, let's say, another fire station was our top priority, I mean, starting the planning, and we'd be awarding a bid about two and a half to three years from now. So, we're not going to be able to really put our arms around what our needs are. We have these projects that are on the drawing boards now, and they are ongoing in process, so our thinking was if we use this money, and we shouldn't use $10 million for these four projects, and we would still have money set aside, some money set aside, you know, in the reserves that would still be allocated towards PERS. But then, we're going to have to come up with a funding program, and it may be that, you know, three or four years down the line, that we may have $25 million of other projects that we want to do, and we may be looking at another COP, coming back to the City Council for that, because we have lots of city facilities, unfortunately, that are in the 40- and 50-year age bracket, including branch libraries, and it's just time that we haven't put money aside, and now we're going to have to deal with it, probably over, you know, a process of 10 years, we're going to have to replace a lot of public facilities.
Mr. Webb, do you have a question on that topic?
Yes, this is the first year you've had a public works reserve, right?
That's right.
Okay, the other thing is, in establishing priorities, one of the things that you commonly look at is the number of people benefited versus the amount spent. There probably, of the facilities that were listed in that list, I don't think a single one of them came close to the 800,000 people a year that use this facility. So, I think that we do have an obligation to look at the usage of a facility and take that into consideration in evaluating priorities. And this is one of the higher-use facilities that we have, and I think along with that, we need, we have an obligation to make sure that it is functional and in a good state of repair, and that's one of the reasons why I feel that... in a good state of repair. And that's one of the reasons why I feel that this is a project that, that probably should not be put off any longer.
Within your competing priorities, where do you place improvements connected to Corona Del Mar High School, and how comfortable are you moving those, some of those forward?
I would place them in the same category as the, the public facilities. These are projects that can be used, we, we can use either general fund money for, like, $150,000, you know, that's doable in our regular CIP program that we bring to you as a part of the budget adoption, or, you know, through gas tax or, or general fund. Wouldn't be competing against other projects.
Yeah, that's the key, is, is that we do have other funding resources for traffic congestion and safety, traffic safety issues. And the park is essentially a general fund-only type thing unless we get grants. So, so that's why.
So, would you see that situation up there as one of your priorities?
So, I, I don't see them competing for priority. I think they're, they're both important projects, but they're just funded out of different pots.
Okay, so it is an important project.
In the last phase, I think of Mr. Selig's question, was that, how did we go from, how did this project double in cost if the scope did not change?
Well, I guess I could-
I know concession costs have gone up, but the fact is, if we're off by a factor, a whole factor, 100% on every project, you know, we're going to have to change the way we do business.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, this is, this is one of those unfortunate situations, and there was a huge jump in, in construction costs that occurred right about that time. Our original estimate in 2003 was 2.5 million, but, and even then, I thought, you know, I, I think most of us in Public Works thought that was a little optimistic as well. I think you have to kind of go back a ways to kind of understand how this project occurred. When we had a, kind of a, I guess you could say, a surplus of funds that came out of the oil spill issue, you know, we kind of spread that around to try to fix a little bit of everything in the tidlin areas, including our piers, which were a priority. I think the, the amount of money that was set aside for the CDN beach was, was really just a ballpark, kind of, "Let's set this aside, and it'll get us a jump start." As you can see, we also tried to pursue many grants. Some, some we were successful, and others we weren't. We were kind of hoping we would be able to get a little more grant money, but we didn't. So, I, I think it was a combination of things. I, I think, you know, the major issue is the, the jump in construction costs, where we saw steel prices and concrete prices rise significantly in 2003 and continuing right up till today.
Mr. Webb?
One of the items that was mentioned in the presentation was the potential of increasing the parking lot fees to $10. What is it now, eight? How much revenue would that bring in annually? Because I noticed that in the previous report, that was in June of 2004, you were looking at paying for part, or paying the general fund back out of parking lot revenues to the tune of, for the seven years, at $220,000 per year. And I'm just wondering if, if perhaps, along with this, we should consider the increasing of those parking lot fees and having that go into the, the Public Works Reserve Fund, any, or some, take some portion of the revenues.
I think I heard yesterday in, in the discussion with the Finance Committee that going from $8 to $10 per car would result in about 180,000 was, was the number that I seem to recall.
So, maybe it would be prudent for-
There may be a loss there, too, though, and that is, people start parking up on top more than they do on the bottom. And we're seeing that all the time now.
I don't think $2 difference is going to make that much difference. The parking lot's going to be full no matter what price you pay.
Well, if you look at the weekdays, the parking up on top is well-taken, whereas the lot is still relatively empty. If we make the fee too much down on, on the lot, all we do is drive the people to their free parking. And I know that for fact to be true.
I think part of the conversation we had at the Finance Committee was to take into account just what Councilman Nichols is saying, is that during the week, maybe the demand is not as strong, and we might have a, a two-tiered parking fee, where during the week, we were going to charge $6 or $8, and, and on the weekend, $10 when the lot is full. And typically, you know, people will pay just about anything to get a spot in that lot.
We did have a very long discussion yesterday, and I think part of, I mean, what persuaded me to support the project is that the ocean and the beach really is the draw, and the restrooms are currently crumbling. I mean, they're literally crumbling. And it seems to me that investing in infrastructure along the beach is important, being a coastal community, provided that we're also going to invest in improvements and relieving our traffic congestion. So, those would be my thoughts.
Have we given any thought to, with the concession air, having them build their own structure and giving them a longer-term lease on that facility?
No, I don't think we have. I don't think we have. I, I think we would want architectural control over that. And I think when you're talking about a concession air, they probably don't do buildings very well. I think that's probably an odd fit. Our choice would be, you know, who can provide, you know, the, the best food and, and represent the city the best as a food vendor there.
And if I could add in, you may recall when we did the original outreach, there was a lot of concern about not, you know, bringing in a big-time vendor that would be open year-round, because I know the adjacent community raised a lot of concerns about whether or not that would happen. And I, I would imagine for someone to come in and make a large investment such as that, to build a concession building, that they would want to be open more hours and, and possibly year-round in order to get, get a good return on their investment.
One other point, and that is, we've had some pretty expensive actions down there, where we had a, a, I don't, a, a party by the Arab community that they hold once a year, and we had all kinds of police needed for support and everything else down there. And that was pretty expensive. The beach had to be shut down. We provided lights. There was no money collected at all on that. So, if we're making a very expensive beach that can be misused like that, this isn't particularly a good scene. Last week, we had a, a live bands down there in the, a live band down in the picnic area down there. I mentioned that to the gal at the kiosk, and she says, "Well, that's not my job." I, I'm sorry, we can't, I shouldn't be calling anybody.
Councilman Nichols, though, another side of that is that the community uses it for special events, too. I mean, annually, Sandcastle Days is held there, and a Corona Del Mar Centennial event was held there, the Corona Del Mar-
They certainly didn't have all those cops, though, and they certainly didn't have all the expense.
I, I'm not talking about the cops and the expense. I'm talking about, you know, restrooms for people to use and, and community people to use, too. I, I know the Corona Del Mar Chamber is having a fundraiser down there in early September, I think a big car show. So, just to point out that it isn't people from outside the community totally. And I think if the facilities maybe were nicer, there would be more community events that might be held down there.
Well, if we had a little more sand, too, it would help. But the sand is pretty well-gone on that beach.
It's open to the, any other council comment here? Okay, can we open to the public? Seeing none, not too quickly, we'll close the public portion. Okay, we have-
Yes, Mr. Selig. Yeah, just one comment. I'm not going to support the motion, and I just want to state why. I think that there are, either the alternative to redesign the facilities to something that more closely fits the original budget, maybe not get into such extensive site work and still meet all of the obligations that the city manager mentioned that, that we have through the grants and agreements with the state and so forth. And I just don't think it's really that responsible to go and to take that huge of, of amount out of the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund to, to spend on the project when it seems that there are other alternatives here. So, I'm just not going to be able to support the motion.
Any other comments? Time to vote.
With Councilmember Selig and Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
City Clerk?
Item number four, ordinance restricting trucks on Ridge Park Road.
Mr. Nichols, I think you-
Yes, I, I asked that this be called up, and I would like us to just, again, consider that when you look at Ridge Park and, and even down at the particular crossing that we're looking at, of Newport Coast and Ridge Park Drive, most of the people cross, or the kids are crossing, from the shopping center over to the school. And that's on the north side of the street there. Where the trucks have careened is trying to make that curve going south, and, and they have been unable to make that turn. And, and basically, Vista Ridge has equal grades, is a narrower road, has a narrower intersection at Newport Crest, passes by more communities. Certainly, we shouldn't burden the community outside of the, the times that, that this is a critical juncture, or supposedly critical juncture because of the schoolchildren. And so, I, I would like to see this restricted to school times, frankly. And I would like to see maybe a, it, yeah, I think that would be satisfactory.
Staff, have comment to that question?
If the police chief were here, he would say, "If you restrict it just to school times," I mean, sometimes school lets out at noon, sometimes it lets out at 2:00. They have short days. There's really no way to notify the contractors and, and hold them accountable. If citations were written, I, I think that they would probably not be upheld. And I think, I've heard the chief say that, you know, you really need to post something that everybody is aware of, that doesn't change, looking at a three-year sunset here. And, and we think that's the way to go, to have good enforcement.
The, the bottom line is, most of the construction traffic would be during business hours, and that's school hours anyway, so it's not like-
Except for some seller.
Oh, that's true. But even in summer, there's a lot of activity going on at schools that we would want to be careful not to, to have. And, and Councilman Nichols is right, that Vista Ridge, or whatever the other alternative route is, doesn't have all the things that the other one does, and it doesn't have a school. And that's the reason why we decided that the truck traffic needs to move over there, because it doesn't have a school.
Mr. Mayor, I moved the recommended item, and if something happens that, that we find that it causes problems that we need to change, we can also modify this at a later date.
Second the motion. It's open to the public. Seeing none, we'll close this portion. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
City Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, is there any motion for reconsideration from this or previous meeting, the prior meeting? Okay, seeing none. Okay, we're going to, we're going to adjourn, and we're going to adjourn to 6 o'clock this Thursday, August 11th. And we're going to deal at that meeting, the sole agenda item will be St. Andrews, the I.R. and the land use decisions. We're going to adjourn tonight in memory of Roman Gomez. Roman Gomez oftentimes handled the camera for our cable provider, and he, and that camera typically. And often a familiar face to us. For others, he was known over the past seven years as the video graffian editor of our Channel 3 Pick-a-Pet and Speak Up Newport program. He also maintained all playback operations for Adelphi's Orange County System Local Origination Department in Anaheim. Unfortunately, Roman passed away early last Monday morning. He was 44 years old, and although he worked, worked mainly behind the scenes, he always made sure our government TV programming ran efficiently and smoothly. He leaves behind his wife, Alejandra, and their two-year-old daughter Violet. And our condolences go to her and, and his daughter. Tonight, we'd like to adjourn in honor of his contributions to our city. Thank you.